Yeah.
Yeah, it's down.
Welcome to the July 11th work session for mayor and council for the city of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have 2023 Maryland Legislative Session Wrap-Up, an engagement agreement with Mr. Rob from President Compass Advocacy. Welcome. Hi.
Hi. Good afternoon, evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Rob Garagiola with Compass Advocacy. And it's been a pleasure to represent you these last couple of years in moving the Fieldhouse project forward. You know, just to kind of recap, and I know there's, I guess, some newer council members. We're part of a firm that has a team of eight lobbyists that focus on the General Assembly and now the Moore administration. And there are probably three of us, I'd say, including myself, that are engaged in representing the city and its interests in Annapolis. I, myself, just for a little bit of background, served in the Maryland Senate for about three terms, 2002 to, what is that, 2014? About, yeah, those three terms. And maintained a lot of great relationships, obviously, in the General Assembly. And some of you met my wife, who's also a partner in Compass, I think, last fall. She worked for the former Senate President, Mike Miller, many years ago, and has been lobbying in Annapolis for 15, 16 years. And then Tyler Bennett, I think, from our firm, another partner, was here, I want to say, in the fall as well. And he staffed the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee. We've got five other folks that we can call in at any time, whether it's funding with respect to the Fieldhouse or other issues that might come up on behalf of the city. And so I just wanted to introduce myself and our firm a little bit before jumping in. As I said, it's been a pleasure representing all of you in Annapolis, both the former mayor as well as the current mayor. And we had a number of great meetings earlier this year. I would say we've got some great allies in the General Assembly, thankfully, that have helped secure some of the funding that we received. I would say it was about, I guess, in the 2022 session, kind of a few fits and starts a little bit, but we managed to secure the initial $1 million and we got $2 million pre-authorized for 2024. And then the mayor came down almost immediately after getting sworn in and kind of hit the ground running with a number of legislators in both the House and the Senate to ensure that we maintain that $2 million, but also sought to get additional money. And we were very optimistic at the beginning of the 2023 session. A lot of federal dollars coming in. I was talking to your city administrator earlier about some of the ARPA, you know, decisions that you're making here at the council level. But at the state level, a lot of federal funding coming in. And so everyone thought in January, flush with cash, it's going to be an easy year. You know, we've got a project here in Hagerstown that's, you know, got its ducks in a row and ready to go, and other projects throughout the state like that. As we got into kind of February and March, there was actually a budget write-down at the state level, about a half billion dollars. And I remember giving you the warning, Madam Mayor and Scott as well, that, you know, well, we might be concerned about maintaining the $2 million. And we kind of went in, you know, DEFCON 5, so to speak, and made a lot of phone calls, met with a lot of folks. The mayor, again, had made a number of visits to key members of the legislature. I would say a huge, huge champion of ours is Delegate Ben Barnes. And he was a champion more than a year ago when he was the chair of the Capitol Budget Subcommittee and helped us secure that initial million and the $2 million prior off for the following year. Thankfully for us, Speaker Jones tapped him to be the chair of the Full Appropriations Committee. So he was in a position to continue to help us. He's a big champion for the city and was someone that was instrumental in getting, not only maintaining the $2 million that we had requested, but getting an additional million to bring us up to $3 million. I know this is a very expensive project. I think the price tag's around $22 million-ish, maybe in counting. We've secured, I believe, about $4 million thus far. I've had some preliminary conversations with the mayor and with Scott and wanted to come before you to talk about kind of next steps, so to speak. My understanding is that the project, we're looking at, I guess, ribbon-cutting next fall, October, give or take. And at the state level, obviously, the fiscal year begins July 1. And that's the next fiscal year we're talking about. So when we come into session in January of '24, and truthfully, they're beginning the budget process now, the governor and his staff, leading into the '24 session, which will be fiscal year '25. So now's a really good time to be thinking about what's the ask? And of that ask, what's kind of the expense, so to speak, for the project in that fiscal year? In other words, costs that we're going to be expending as a city for this project, July 1 to, I guess, whenever the ribbon-cutting is, you know, in the fall. I think, you know, and I was talking to Scott earlier about this, the $3 to $4 million range, I think, is in the range of possibility. And I think is what I would suggest that we pursue for the next session. I know there's been some conversations with Senator Quarterman and Delegate Grossman already. Obviously, we need to collaborate with both of them. But there are a number of other folks. Now that the Moore administration is getting settled in with the election last year, there were a number of other changes in the General Assembly. And, you know, it was largely the Hogan budget. Moore got to put a few touches on it. This year is going to be the first year where it's really going to be the Moore budget. And typically, in a non-election year, that process begins, really, about now, truthfully. And so presuming we're going forward, I think that sitting down with the Budget Secretary and folks at the Department of Budget and Management in the next two to three months, you know, about this, updating them on this. I mean, they have some familiarity with the project, but we want to try and see if we can get funding in the governor's budget at the outset. That's obviously much easier route to go. And if we can get the funding in there, then it's maintaining it with the General Assembly. Now, if we fall short, or if we only get partial of what we're looking for with the governor's budget, then we have the backstop of the General Assembly and some of our champions there that we would go to to try to get the rest of that funding, much like we did this past year. So that honestly has been a large focus of what we've been doing these last two years. I know I've talked with both the former mayor and the current mayor, as well as Scott, about some other issues in legislation of importance. This past session, as well as that might be coming up again in the upcoming session. And we're more than willing and able and desirous of helping you on those endeavors as well. But I think this is, the charge we've been giving in the past two years is this is our number one priority, and that's what we've been focusing on. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any further overview of kind of what we're thinking about and what we're doing.
You guys have any questions?
We have two items.
Sure.
And I asked this question of our senator and delegate a few weeks back. When they, when they met with the Greater Hagerstown Committee, and everybody's obviously aware now that cannabis has, you know, reached the recreational level. I had clearly, I think I was aware that, you know, that's where it was headed from day one. I don't think it ever was going to sit in the medical world forever. And so now that it has moved beyond the medical capacity and the recreational, and there has, you know, been an appropriate tax levied upon it, which was clearly the inclination as well, I'm just curious if you have any insight as to what that may do for the state budget next year.
So from a revenue perspective, you know, I want to say it was in like the, you know, high 180s, maybe $200 million range of revenue that is being anticipated, kind of once fully up and running. And, you know, where things stand today is a lot of the medical dispensaries basically flipped to offering both medical, which is not taxable, and you still need a doctor's prescription, all that, but recreational. But in addition to that, there's a system being put in place relatively quickly. The commission itself that regulates all of this is, has emergency regulations that they've promulgated that have moved forward. There's going to be another set of emergency regulations. Long and short of it is, there are going to, there's going to be more capacity in the state, more dispensaries, more grow facilities. There's a whole kind of manner in which that's going to occur with the lottery and some other things that... But I say all that to say, I think that revenue is anticipating the additional, you know, dispensaries and additional, you know, market that still has to develop in the state. So it might take like a year or a little more to get to the numbers that I just raised. I think that that's going to be a huge help from an economic standpoint. I'll talk a little bit more fiscally since you brought that up. So why was there a revenue write-down? I think, you know, at the time, inflation was still, I mean, it's still out there, but it's eased a little bit. And the Fed was raising at a much greater clip. They didn't raise it the last round, they may raise it the next round, interest rates. And I think that the anticipation from the fiscal analysts was that we're likely to go into a recession. And that's still a question right now. But I think around March timeframe, you know, most of the prognosticators are saying it's not, it's probable. I think, you know, some are now saying, well, maybe not, you know? And so there's a big unknown there. But that creates a huge swing from a tax revenue standpoint. And I think that's kind of why the state decided we're going to do some belt tightening with this current budget that they dealt with. The other thing I want to mention, though, is that the blueprint for education, which has been ongoing now for about a half decade, I'd say, was a commitment that was made by the legislature to massively increase funding for not only K through 12 education, but pre-K and also kind of post-12 education. There's still like tranches of additional funding that are needed to meet those obligations. And so I know that the, at least the Speaker's office, as recently as a week ago, has talked to some of her committee chairs that they're going to need to look for revenue or spending reductions. You know, so they're anticipating greater needs from a spend perspective. There's still uncertainty as far as where the economy goes. And then obviously, yes, I would say the increase in revenue is going to be from cannabis. The question is, is there still going to be a delta or not? And that's the unknown right now.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, for me, I mean, my opinion on both of those things. The first is, I think the cannabis amount is being under-calculated. I think that by the end of the day, it'll be at least double that. And I say that because the net result will be, not only will we be generating revenue from a retail sales side, in other words, right now it's just the dispensaries. Once the smaller retail operations get up and running, it's going to expand significantly. And then the second from that is, we won't be wasting money on the expense side any longer for the incarceration of individuals for that particular item. So I think that, you know, all the money that we were wasting on that will, you know, create a net positive on the expense side. As far as the economy and the recession, I mean, I manage a small town, and I would certainly agree with that in normal circumstances. But here's what I see, just as a manager of a small town, and I'm sure you see it in the car business and you see it in the HVAC business, et cetera. That would be much more probable if we were at a time when interest rates were escalated at the level they are now and goods were abundantly available that nobody wanted to buy because the interest rate level, right? But the problem is, we're still in this period where there are no goods. So you're still like buying what you can get as you can get it, to sell it as you can sell it because the consumer still wants. In other words, we've had this like two-and-a-half-year period where these goods just haven't been available, and they're still not available in any consistent degree. So I just don't see the consumer stopping buying anytime soon, no matter that interest rate level on those quantity of goods, because people are still wanting those widgets, those items, you know what I mean? So I just, I don't see that stopping. I mean, I've seen playground costs triple in price, but nobody stopped buying playground. In fact, the state's more than doubled the funding they're sending to local jurisdictions to buy their stuff. And we're still buying it and still waiting 36 to 52 weeks to get the stuff. So, but anyway.
I think that's all fair. I mean, I think, you know, it's, I think the pandemic probably create, I mean, it's an unknown. We're in uncharted territory, so to speak. In normal circumstances, the supply constrictions, I think, are still kind of a lagging effect of that. And I think that's probably a big part of where the inflationary forces were. But it's a question mark. And but at the same time, the analysts that the legislature and the governor rely on are just putting caution in the wind. But, you know, look, six months from now, I mean, it could be a completely different picture. And I think it's not impossible for everyone at that point in time when we get back into session to say, you know what? There's not going to be a recession. And, you know, instead of pumping the brakes, they're like, okay, there's a, you know, good trajectory. I think the question, I think it's an unknown right now, I guess, is really what I'm saying. But I wanted to raise it just for kind of awareness purposes of kind of, it's possible, because that's what happened at the end of this past session. They did pump the brakes and they reduced the governor's budget by a pretty substantial amount and then didn't fund a number of his priority bills that he wanted to get done in his first year.
So the second item that I would have, and I think this is more as, you know, as you sort of represent us and carry this into the next session, is we can certainly talk about all the good things that we want to have, you know, like the multi-use stadium, like the Fieldhouse, you know, the nice library. All of those things are good for our community. But we had two pieces of legislation this past year, one of two which passed, which was to address the blighted properties. And, you know, I use the example of the gentleman that came in and spoke before us a couple of years back. And he said, you know, why are you applying a $100 fee for my vacant property? You know, simply because it's not occupied? And I said, well, when's the last time it was occupied? And he said, 1985. And I guess what I'm saying by that is, we really need both those pieces of legislation because it isn't a money item, but for us it really is because it's an assessment item. And it really benefits nobody, not the people looking for housing, not the people, you know, wanting to live in the neighborhoods we have, not the business person who wants, you know, to market it. If all we get to do is watch these properties go, sit on the courthouse steps, not get bought up or get bought up by folks who like the loss and buy the note against it every year, year after year, and it just sits in this like recycling process, you know, getting re-washed and nowhere every year. But what we really want to do is, we want legislation, and I think this is what I want to convey to the state, we want legislation to get these properties out of that recycling process and put back in good hands, marketable hands, people with investment dollars, and get it back to people. And we talk about, you know, there being this housing crisis. It's odd to hear that when maybe 10% of our stock in the city is sitting vacant without the ability to adequately acquire it, redo it, you know what I mean? Invest in it and put it out there.
I agree. I mean, there's like no public good from what's occurring right now, and it just, it makes no sense.
And to have, you know, have a $25 million library or a $70 million stadium or a $20 million Fieldhouse, those are great things, but they're not as great as they can be if 10 out of 100 houses right around them are sitting in a derelict, long-term condition.
And we were, we were real close on that, on that second bill. We just could not get folks to understand that we were not kicking owner occupied.
Right.
And, you know, you would say, we're not doing these or vacancies or vacants. And then still, the question comes up, what, well, what if someone lives there? It's just, you know, try, I mean, you've experienced that down there and because you helped us with that this year.
Yeah.
And so it's just, it's just the wordsmithing, I've come to find out. It's just the wordsmithing that we have to work on and with the budget analyst and with the legislative folks to try to get that to where it can't be made any clearer.
I mean, I'm hopeful that we'll have better opportunity this coming session with that. I think the other thing I didn't mention, kind of as an overview, is any time, you know, you have a new governor coming in, you've got, you know, I want to say about a dozen or more new senators, you know, about a quarter essentially. Almost a third of the House members are new. And, you know, there was also a committee reshuffling in the Senate where like, you know, jurisdictional issues got changed for the first time in like, I don't know, 20-some years. You know, a lot of things, you know, a new chair of a committee, another committee in the Senate that never served on that committee. So I think there was a lot more, because I use the word with respect to kind of the fiscal side of it, but caution among some legislators. And I think some who just needed more education because they were new to the process. So I honestly, with that, I'm a lot more hopeful that this can get done this year because that excuse doesn't exist now. You know, they're there, they've been there, they get it, they understand it, you know, and, yeah.
And we went into it just as Washington and, well, Hagerstown, Cumberland and Frostburg. This time, after being at MML a couple of weeks ago, we have, the entire state wants to go in on it with us.
Right. I mean, it's not the only place where that's in, you know. I mean, I am much more optimistic about this next, this coming session.
It's pretty good.
Yeah. For sure.
Thanks for advocating for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Enjoy it.
And we've got the agreement in the packet. It's an 11-month agreement, just simply because it'll be August to the end of June. And then we'll have it on the agenda for the regular session to vote on. And passes will get working August 1st.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. Look forward to working with you again on this, as well as the Fieldhouse and other issues.
I have one thing.
Yeah.
I did not know you and Hannah was married.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Wow. Yeah, I did not know that. So this minute.
Yeah.
Tell Hannah hello.
We both have a funky last name, you know? She's joked with some people, she's like, I'm his sister, but I... No, we're, yeah, married, two beautiful children, and, you know.
Tell her hello. Thank you.
We'll do, we'll do. Yeah, you know, you had the better half last time. You just got, you know, second fiddle this time.
Thanks, man.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Safe travels home.
Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Your eyeshadow is pretty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have Rees Development Water and Wastewater Service Nancy. Herself is our Director of Utilities and Attorney Anne Roth.
Ha, and just a pretty face.
I did bring with me, in case anybody needed them, just to maintain the perspective, so.
Here, I'll distribute all of your metal white.
Okay. I'll leave them here for you. It's easy to get turned around. The last time we met on June 13th, several questions were provided. And so we went back and we got answers to those questions. And the first question was, does Funtstown have the capacity? You know, has their engineering firm provided that information? Mayor Crampton did convey that Funtstown did receive a report from Aero Consulting confirming Funtstown would be able to serve just Phase 1. There was some discussion about Phase 1 and Phase 2. Funtstown, Mayor Crampton indicated they would be able to serve Phase 1 only. I conveyed last time that Mayor Crampton indicated the reasoning for wanting water and wastewater had to do with utility billing and being able, you know, to collect on delinquent accounts. Usually do that through water, with water and wastewater utilities. In a phone conversation late last week with Mayor Crampton, he further indicated that the reason for wanting water and wastewater was because they would not be receiving any property tax revenue for this subdivision. I still, I do not know conclusively if Funtstown would provide wastewater service only. They met last night. The decision or the information that came back from last night's Funtstown mayor and council meeting was that they would serve Hager, they would serve the Phase 1 of this development, water and wastewater. So that's what we have for the question one. Is, question two, there was an inquiry about the private pump station. Would it still be required to, the answer to that, if the wastewater flow for Phase 1 went to Funtstown? The answer to that is no. There would be some grinder pumps required. Since this memo was written, those grinder pumps would be the responsibility of the customer, not the responsibility of the town. So just want to point out that change. The third question was asked.
Is that consistent with Gaver Meadows?
I can't, I can't answer that. I don't know if Gaver Meadows, if the customers are responsible for the grinder pumps or whether the town is. It was indicated, it was what was provided in the email from Mr. Trostle was that Funtstown maintenance says. But I can't, I don't have the answer to that question. Question three, talked about the benefit fee differential. I provided a chart showing the different, showing the benefit fees for inside and outside for both Hagerstown and Funtstown. And then the third table shows that the water differential would be $2,039, where the wastewater differential would be $248. That is assuming inside-city rates and outside Funtstown's rates because these customers would be outside of Funtstown municipal limits. But they would be inside-city limits. So that's what that differential is based on. In your, in the set of drawings, the first drawing is a repeat. The second drawing is also a repeat that shows parcel one and parcel two. I also wanted to share the drawing that was provided to us from, from the developer, showing just a concept. I will tell you that this concept, the way it's drawn, would not work, but I still wanted to share. The meter locations would have to change and there would have to be an air gap, a separation between Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the water system. They couldn't be interconnected. I also want to make sure that you're aware that, that the town of Funtstown would want the loop, the water loop completed, which is the bold blue line, and an interconnect on Beaver Creek. It's likely that a sub-meter would be required there because of the pressure differential, the pressure on the city's water system versus the pressure on Funtstown's water system. If our water system pressure is higher and Funtstown's lower, this interconnect is automatically going to feed Funtstown. higher and Funtstown's lower, this interconnect is automatically going to feed Funtstown beyond, greater than the subdivision. So you would almost need a, some way to meter that because of the limitations that we, would be in place associated with the townhomes and the 120 EDUs. It would be really hard to keep track of how much water was going to the subdivision.
Is that what the little red square means?
The Phase 2 water meter is for the Phase 2 development, which is the apartment complex. The, where they're showing a master meter over on Beaver Creek, right here. This, this would actually end up being a sub-meter, and we would anticipate that the master meters for both, for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 would be out, kind of at the point of entry into the water system. This is the interconnect.
Right. All Funtstown system and ours.
Yes. And, yes, it is, but because of the pressure, pressure differential, you'd have to have a sub-meter there and a meter entering the subdivision, so you could determine how much water were going to these 120 units.
You could divide it to be able to know what Funtstown is, should be charged in, in such a phases.
Yeah. You would, yeah, you would essentially, yes, be looking at likely three meters. One for Phase 2, one for Phase 1, and one, which would be a sub-meter, that would be, be the water that's being fed to Funtstown, but not part of the customers, not part of the city customers, that would be part of that, the amended water wholesale agreement. So just wanted to share that with you as well. There's really not, oh, go ahead.
I want to go back to our conversation with the maps prior to this, and I want to better understand, so you're saying the water would come in from this direction?
The water would come from the dual highway, yes.
From this direction?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we go back to the original, the drawing, the schematic that we put together, where it shows CarMax up here, the water would come in through the CarMax and down through the subdivision.
Okay.
I'm going to say across Emmeritt Road.
Across, okay. I got you.
Yeah, okay.
And, maybe I'm mistaken. How would this create the loop that we talked about in our previous discussion if the development was served by in-city water?
It, when it, it doesn't create a loop for the city, it creates a loop for Funtstown.
I'm trying to understand how we're not getting our loop now.
So this schematic was provided by the developer. So this may not cohesively fit in with prior discussions we have had. I think Nancy's just presenting this as something the developer prepared.
Because I thought our object, I'm sorry, but I, I thought our objective was to get our system, that's serving our customers, inner loop because of this area here that is also going to be developed.
The Harrison?
Right.
Yeah. One of the things that, that would be a loop on this side, and what the developer is showing now, that this would be a private system going through a master meter, and there wouldn't be any, any water, if you will, on Hebb Road, is what this is showing now.
So Nancy, would it be fair to say that the schematic provided by the developer may not address the priorities that the council has expressed?
Yes.
We lose our loop, in short.
If, if we use this proposal that was provided.
Correct.
Okay.
And Nancy, it, does city staff also have concerns regarding Phase 2, if there's a master meter here when it comes to fire protection in Phase 2, particularly this multi-story built, family building? Or have those been remedied?
They, as long as we require that the, the water main and the meter size be consistent with what would be the base flow in the system, no, that, that would be addressed.
So, so how did we get our loop? That's the question. Again, how did we get our loop?
Get us back to it.
Get us back to it.
That's a good question.
Yeah, if we need it.
The way it's, the way it's drawn right now, the getting of the loop would be very difficult. That would go, that's one of those things we would have to go back to the developer and say, "Okay, you know, we want to be able to loop Hebb Road." Remember to, that our Paul Smith will actually come down across, partway across that property and loop out the dual, but that still doesn't satisfy a loop in the system in, in Phase 2.
So can the city get the loop it desires if we are not providing service to Phase 1?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There you go.
We can.
Well, yeah, how do we get our loop back to it?
Yes, we can.
As it, as it applies to the fire flow, so what you provided in this memo was the water-fire flow analysis. And it basically says scenario to parcel 1 water, Funtstown master meter, or scenario, scenario to, yeah. It says that if you put the 12-inch line in, right?
Mm-hmm.
With the 10-inch master meter.
Correct.
That you get fire flow. I guess my question is, does that mean you get fire flow as it applies to the, the engineering application of, of the sizing of that line? In other words, it's one thing to say that you're going to have adequate fire flow because you put a 12-inch line in. It's another thing to say you're going to have adequate fire flow because you put a 12-inch line in, and you have X PSI behind that line at X rate. And so I don't care if you put a 16-inch line in. If you don't have adequate PSI this far out into the system, at this location, that has to go through these subset of, of lines to get there, the engineering analysis can tell me that, you know, engineering-wise, you're going to get 1,200, you know, gallons per minute, but we don't have 1,200 gallons a minute to send through the line at that location, at that PSI, for more than three minutes.
What the hydraulic model do, does, is it looks at the, the static residual pressure at the hydrants in this area, using different pipe scenarios. For, so for the base scenario, where we look at an 8-inch line and a 12-inch line, the hydraulic model, what Heisen and Sawyer did is they, they used the hydrant flow data, using, like I said, the static residual, and they run that through the model. So it is a calculation, it is, it is modeled. But it does take system pressure into consideration. The biggest difference between the base scenario and this scenario, which is scenario 1, and scenario 2 is, you can only get the amount of water, you're limited by the capacity of the meter.
Right.
Amount of the water that that meter will deliver.
It's a pinch point.
Mm-hmm. So that's the primary difference. You're never, you're never going to get, in reality or in theory, the same amount of water you, you would without a meter. So that's the biggest difference between the two, is the limiting factor is your meter.
We get a Class A rating in both Phase 1 and Phase 2?
In, yes, we do. Over 1,000 gallons a minute.
On paper. Well, that's how it always is, Chris, with a new development. It's always on paper. Okay, so I, for me, it comes down to this. What are the pros and what are the cons of allowing Funtstown both water and sewer, or just the sewer? I mean, you know, we had, in, in all fairness, and to be totally above board, Nancy, I talked about this a little bit today already. Some of the pros are, of course, you know, the development happens, we get a big tax base, that helps everybody, every citizen in the city of Hagerstown. And it saves us wastewater allocation. We don't get the water, which saves us water allocation. Our citizens are going to pay.
No, we still, the water.
Oh, we're going to put, no, that's right.
Yeah, we're going to sell water to Funtstown.
We're going to sell water to Funtstown. But our citizens are still going to pay the same rate in Phase 1 that they would in Phase 2 for water.
That has to be, I'll be one.
Right, that, right, that'll be in the agreement.
That has to be worked out through the wholesale water agreement, whatever those rates will be.
Right. So, for me, it's a win-win. It saves us wastewater allocation. Our citizens, if worked out in the agreement like it's supposed to be, which I, I have let Nancy know that's one of my biggest concerns, is that our citizens will pay the same water rate and sewer rate that our current citizens pay. No more because of this agreement. And that, you know, the development moves forward, we reap the benefit of the assessed taxes and, which of course benefits everybody. So. Now, if there's a, if there's a bad sign of this, let me know what that is.
Do, do we have any idea what the timeframe is when it comes to negotiation of the wholesale water agreement and any other agreements we may need, and how that fits into the developer's schedule?
We, I don't necessarily have a timeframe. What, what I did, I would estimate, best case here.
We have somebody here who could possibly answer that.
Well, best ca, yeah. Best-case scenario, if we can work out all of the details within a 30-day window, the ordinance, this is, has to all be done via an ordinance. So you automatically have a two-month window in there, associated with the introduction of an ordinance, and then the approval of an ordinance. So in, at a minimum, I'm going to say three months to work through the paperwork. That's assuming that the two jurisdictions, as well as the developer, can come to agreement on everything for water and wastewater in that 30-day period. Some of the considerations that I wrote down, you know, of course, as a wholesale agreement, we have to work through benefit fees, usage fees, we have to look at max, max use for Phase 1 for water. We also have to incorporate the 2018, which agreement or ordinance which allowed for a third point of entry into Funtstown into the wholesale agreement. We have to develop language in the water and sewer, in, in both ordinances, the one for water and the one for sewer, to make sure if there's ever a need for those city residents to come back and be served by the city's system, that we have the ability to do that. We're going to have to work with the developer to make sure that the easement that they negotiated includes the city of Hagerstown on the sewer side for Phase 2. They're just, some of the things, we have to.
That's all lawyer stuff.
A, a lot of that is lawyer stuff. Some of it involves city code, which is.
Kathy stuff.
Well, it's already in city code, so that's a whole lot more lawyer stuff. But we have to, we have to look at.
What are you even doing?
Yeah. We have to look at the interconnection. We're going to have to ask Funtstown for pressure and flow data for the hydrants closest to that interconnection, so we know what to do there. Because right now, I'm, you know, I'm running a little bit of presumption that it is lower pressure, so we would have to work that out. And.
Well, the entire time that all this is being worked out, over the three-month period or whatever, if the council agrees to allow this to happen, then the project can move forward as far as design and engineering and stuff like that can begin.
Yes, but there is a risk to the developer in that if you give us the, your go-ahead is going to be general, right?
Sure.
Because we don't have the terms in that agreement.
Sure, you aren't going to, right, we aren't going to vote anything.
Right. So if it turns out for some reason, we can't actually get that agreement to do what we need it to do.
Well, that's much like when a developer moves forward on something because he knows he's doing the right thing, and then code comes behind and says, "Well, this is wrong." Then that developer has to tear that out and redo it. Right. And developers understand that risk.
Right. I just think here, it's a bigger risk, because we're talking about
It's a huge risk, yeah.
Water infrastructure.
Which would mean that we, we should be able to, you know, brilliant minds that are at this table should be able to figure it out.
I appreciate the blatant flattery. Thank you.
One of the, one of the things that, that, you know, that I can go back to Funtstown and ask, and that can ask of, of this body, is that can the two, there's going to be separate agreements. There'll be an ordinance for the sewer agreement, and then there'll be the wholesale water agreement, which is a completely different beast. Can those agreements, can those, I'm going to say, those ordinances or processes move forward independent of each other? The biggest hurdle for the developer is the sewer. So as long as Funtstown is fine with those two, those items moving independent of each other, it's, I think it's likely more feasible to say we can get the sewer work done in that time period. I think the water's going to be much, much harder, because there's so many moving parts. The risk in doing that is if we, if the two bodies cannot come to agreement, you know, will Funtstown be okay with just accepting the sewer at that point, or will they say, "Never mind." You know, if we allow the two agreements to move independently of each other.
Don't we have, don't we have other agreements, like, you know, when it comes to water, maybe due at the Council of Smithburg, Winchford?
We have nothing like this.
I, I get it.
Yeah.
I get we have nothing like this. But we do have agreements.
We have three wholesale water agreements, one with each town. All of our other, I'm going to say, large customers, public authority, Board of Education, they're all individually metered customers, individual accounts. Even like the trailer, the trailer parks and that sort of thing, they are master metered, just like any other non, non-single-family residential account. So we don't, we've never negotiated a water agreement where we're selling water to entity, you know, to one entity who is then, where we're negotiating all of these different things, where they're selling it back to our customers. You know, clearly we have the wholesale agreements where they're selling it to their customers, but not back to ours. And I honestly, I don't know, and this would be a question for Chief Lore, the phase, this whole parcel is inside-city limits. You know, the water system on Phase, if we move forward on Phase 1, would be owned and operated by Funtstown. Water system for Phase 2 is master meter. You know, I'm fairly confident saying that, you know, the city would be first responder in both cases. In one case, they would be, you know, using the water system associated, that's owned and operated by Funtstown. In, in the other case, and Chief Lore has not seen the latest drawing yet, you know, with having a master meter and essentially all private hydrants behind that master meter, as far as fire protection is concerned. That goes back to your question. as far as fire protection is concerned, that goes back to your question, Kristin, about the looping of phase two. So even though the flow would be there at the meter, you know, we would want to at least have that conversation.
So, I just want to understand clearly, so is what we're talking about at this point, what we're looking at, in other words, we're not talking about interconnecting the city's mains to the adjoining undeveloped property across Hep Road?
Correct. That's, that is what was provided most recently by the developer, is that page three.
So we would not be, we would not be getting an interloop system within the city?
Not with what's proposed by, on the most recent drawing by the developer, no.
Nancy, has staff's recommendation changed from just providing city water and allowing Funkstown, if they're willing to do wastewater?
No.
Wastewater only, I should say. I do see that you said that Funkstown does not indicate if they would be willing to provide wastewater only. But that would still, from what I'm hearing, still be the easiest end for the city, seems to be the least complicated path to go, right?
Just wastewater is the least complicated.
How can we determine if Funkstown's willing to do that?
They're not.
Just wastewater?
Yeah.
I've asked the question, you know, why water? And, you know, I've provided the answers that they provided. When I talked to Mayor Crum, Crampton initially, he indicated that if we could resolve the billing issues, they were fine with that. When I talked to him the second time, he said they want, you know, that the water was important to them because they would not be collecting any property tax revenue. So I can, you know.
They have nothing to do with each other.
I know.
General fund property taxes and utility rate systems have nothing to do with one another.
I, I know.
So Nancy, can I ask you?
But money is still money.
They don't have anything to do with each other.
But money is still money.
We're really, but we're seriously sitting here going to make a bad, long-term deal for the city of Hagerstown.
You think that's a bad, long-term deal?
This is 100% a bad deal. I would never recommend that the city not create every opportunity it gets to loop its water system.
I'm not saying that was shouldn't. I think, and we can, and we can do a loop. Nancy told you we can. We can still get a loop.
That's not what's here, though.
I, I get that. And I think it's already been said that these drawings are not 100% correct.
Maybe my question was confusing then. Is what we're talking about not looping our system across Hep Road?
What is, what is in this concept that we have does not loop it. We can, we can require that in order for this to happen, that it be looped across, but what was provided to us most recently does not include a loop. Can we require a loop? Yes.
Because I get a little bit frustrated with this, this notion that the, the, the delivery capability looks great on paper as an engineer draws it out, but we are clearly finding out on more than one occasion that out in this area, as we extend our service in this direction, with no, with no pressurized component of the system for delivery, that what we draw on paper and what we engineer is different than what occurs in the field when we absolutely and critically need that resource.
So Nancy, can I just ask you a question that I think might flesh out some of what councilman Schindler was looking for? You had conversations with Funkstown and perhaps with the developer in light of questions that were raised by council. And with that additional information, the recommendation that you presented has not changed, correct?
No, my recommendation is the, for all practical purposes, is the same as it was on June 13th, which is that staff recommends for the approval of wastewater service to be provided by Funkstown, which would require the development and approval of an agreement via ordinance by both jurisdictions. Because of all of the discussion, what I said as far as it pertains to water, that short should the mayor and council have a desire to approve providing water service through a fourth, fourth point of entry for those 120 EDUs, substantial amendments to the wholesale agreement would be required. And, you know, one of the questions that Councilmember Bruchy asked me earlier today, and is it doable? The answer to that is yes, it's doable, but it is an incredible amount of work. Is the water system going to function the same as it would if we were the supplier of the entire parcel, the entire phase one and phase two? No, it won't function the, quite the same because of the meters. Will they have Class A, 1,000 gallons per minute or more fire protection? Based on hydraulic model, the answer to that question is yes. So it is doable if both bodies can come to terms on all of the agreements, on everything that's required and the timeframe that it may be required. And I, you know, for the water side, I think we're looking probably at at least six months. We've got our work to do, we've got them to present it to Funkstown, their legal, council has to review it, it has to go through review by their elected body. Back to us, if, I'm not going to make the assumption there won't be any amendments or changes to it, back to us to address amendments. And I think anything less than a three- to four-month process, period to hammer out the water would, you know, would be an underestimation of the time that would be needed to do that. That's why, you know, one of the, you know, one of the thoughts is, is that if the two agreement, if the water and the sewer, if the mayor and council desire to move forward with the water, can they move forward independently of each other, knowing that there's a risk that we may never come to terms on the water?
Is there anything preventing the city from being able to supply the water to this property in the timeframe that the developer needs?
Absolutely no.
It's not the water.
Right, was the wastewater.
Absolutely no.
I mean, I'm in, you know, I'm in favor because I know that this development will be a benefit to the city of Hagerstown. And it does things out here that gets other things started. And, you know, if we don't, you know, if we don't agree to this, we don't let Funkstown have the water and wastewater, will they want the waste, will they want just the wastewater? What I've heard is no. They want the water and the wastewater, mainly because they're trying to cover some of their expense on the water side. I, I mean, you know, granted, Kristin's right, taxes and utilities are two separate entities. And just like we use them, I'm sure Funkstown does the same way. I'm sure that their utilities are different from their tax base. But you've got to be able to cover your costs when you're doing any kind of utility work. I mean, even, even if you factor in long-term to cover 20 years or whatever it is, I mean, you've got to have some kind of, you know, some kind of benefit that's going to, you know, cover your cost, and wastewater won't do it. And if it's not, you know, if they, if they won't take just the wastewater, then we have to wait until the pump station starts, which then again is 25, probably. End of '24, very easy.
My opinion would be to get an official answer if they're willing to take just wastewater, because that certainly seems to be the staff recommendation.
I think, I think we've gotten that.
I'm pretty sure we have.
I think we've gotten that from, because they met last night.
And they, they came back and said water and wastewater. And what Ann and I were just talking about was, is that, just as a reminder, through pump station nine, the developer, water and wastewater would be available, just requires a private pump station. And the other thing that I would mention is that, you know, we can put a motion together and bring this back for a formal vote if, if that's what's needed.
Councilman Alshire, would, your main requirement is that the city would have the system looped at Hep Road if this was to move forward at all?
I don't think that's just me talking.
No, but that's what you expressed.
Yeah, I think that's what we expressed when we had this conversation last.
I'm sorry, Mr. Question.
I wasn't here. To make sure the system was looped.
I thought that's probably what it was, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, to make sure the system is looped.
Like I thought we laughed.
Right. So that would sound like a, a deal breaker.
If we can't get the, if we can get the looped, I mean, does that sound?
You entertain those discussions to start with that being a requirement?
And indeed, we need to see it.
Madam America, we ask Mr. Trostel if he could add anything that may cover some of the questions we may have. He's here, yeah. Dave, come on.
Hi, Mr. Trostel. Good afternoon, thank you very much.
Do you want to sit here with the mic? I'll move down here. That way your mic.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, you can start that your seat.
Just introduced myself, oops, sorry. Just introduced myself. I'm Dave Trostel, I'm with Frederick Cyber and Associates, I'm the project engineer for this project. There was a few questions, and I think I'd like the, the one about timing, we were talking about three-to-four-month process going through this. Right now, where we're at in this whole development is, we submitted a concept plan to the city and have gone to planning commission with that concept plan when it was all townhouses. We have to go back now that it's half-townhouses, half-multi-families, and the new process in the city is we have to do a sketch plan and an ESD plan together. So there's some preliminary design that we have to do that. So it's going to take us time to do that design, submit that to the city, them to review it, for them to get comments, and then we go to the planning commission to get that ESD concept approved. That's going to take at least three months just in that, that process. In the meantime that's going through, we can start the engineering of the entire development, but this three-to-four months of this agreement works in our time schedule that we're going through the concept phase, moving to the site plan, but not getting too far into that process, but the developer is willing to, you know, go at that, at that risk. So that kind of, I hope, answers maybe that, that question.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I think is important for the council to have. So, right now, I think the options on the table for wastewater when it comes to phase one is that Funkstown has the capability to serve it.
Correct.
Or the city has the capability to serve it, but we need at least an interim pump station put in.
Well, the developer, that's a lot of money for them to spend upfront for a temporary pump station.
Right. I mean, I don't know if council is interested in understanding what that cost would be for the developer, if that helps you weigh out any of the options or not. But, I mean, I think when it comes to wastewater for phase one, that's the, the crux of the matter.
But it's, it's not just a private pump station, then we're providing a force main that's basically going the whole way back up towards Carmax, that's where we'd be coming into, correct? So there's, just not the private pump station, there's that whole force main line that would not be used again because it would be temporary.
So, under perfect circumstances, pump station 33 would be done and we would not need that, right?
That was the whole premise of, of this, when we started, correct?
I guess that, I'm a little curious because you're saying December 2024, right? We've been talking about this since probably March, I would say as a body. We are halfway through July. We are now 18 months. In other words, I'd have a different perspective on that conversation and the timeframe sensitivities that apply to it if we were still 24 months ago, right? But now, we're, now we're at 18 months ago, and, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not absolutely familiar, but.
We, we have been talking about this.
For longer.
A lot longer.
I know that.
And the guarantee of when that pump station is going to be online is still not a given, correct?
We are, we are planning, right now, we had a progress meeting today, we are planning to bid the construction phase in October. And then, you know, of course, with the ward, and we're still under, we're still working and plan to have that pump station online in December 2024.
So I feel like we're three-to-four months removed from where we were three or four months ago, which was a much greater unknown. And I'm just sitting here looking at this going, you're not through sketch plan phase, you've got concept phase to go, then you've got engineering and design. By the time you put a shovel in the ground, we're talking November?
Oh, it would be before that. Basically, it'd be, if we could give.
We're July right now, we're talking almost six months to get these agreements done with the third-party other town.
Correct.
So.
We're talking about a year, a year process for the engineering from everything, so you're talking July of next year.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, there's no way this year you're going to, to be laying out this property.
That's correct. We, because we had.
So just odd to me that, you know, you're literally going to be grading the site out while we're under construction of the pump station at this point. And I don't feel like we were there four months ago, completely agree with you on that, but now I feel like that's a different conversation.
But last, but I might point out to the body, last year at this time, we were told that the pump station was going to be done a year before that. So what if we get to three months from now and we're told something else happened that it's delayed another six months? We are not guaranteed, I understand the idea of when that's going to get constructed and completed, but it's not a guarantee. This other route is a guarantee, more in our control than the pump station waiting on for the city.
Yeah. No, I don't, I don't see the timeframes that, that much differently at this point. Three or four months ago, I would agree.
I know the developer and the ones that want to, you know, develop this do see that differently.
Yeah.
Well, let's keep in mind, the December of 2024 timeframe is given to us because of ARPA-Fonds.
Correct.
That's the reason. If we don't hit that, what happens, Michelle?
There is, we have to.
We have to hit that.
You know, I hear you say that, we have to hit that, but we've seen things come and go that we haven't hit. I mean, just, you know, things that are beyond our control. Right.
Right.
And we are also in August putting out, the bid will go out for the, the pumps, the VFDs, the generator and the pipe. So we are, if you will, securing those materials to get them moving. Everything has been nailed down with what's going to be needed, and the engineer will be working with Tyler in our finance department to get that bid on the street so that we can address some of those lead times.
But Councilman Alshire, back to your comment, we haven't delayed on our end submitting our sketch ESD plan. We can't do that until we know where water and sewer is going. So that's why we've been going around, like I said, since November, trying to get an answer where water and sewer goes so we can start this process.
But that was for a different plan?
No.
I mean, this plan now, now this plan envisions not having townhouses, but having these huge structures here.
No, since November, we've had this, this plan, but we can't take it to city planning commission until we know, that's one of the checkboxes on there of who is servicing and where is water and sewer coming from. What's that?
These are, are they being served? Because I'm here, this one over here.
Yes, this, this whole section is being serviced.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
And then, and then, and then, and then the second question was about the looping. That was originally proposed a while back about us coming from dual highway, coming over and across Teb Road. Then it was determined that that piece would never be connected because Paul Smith Boulevard wouldn't be connected out through there, so that would never be connected. So we basically went away from that, and originally, when this whole development was talked about being served by just the city, it was coming and to this, and we were having a flushing connection on the end, it was not being looped. So I've talked to developer, we have no problem coming through this development across Teb Road, providing the stub over there that whenever that piece is, isn't developed, that that can be looped in there. So to answer your question, we have no problem with, you know, that loop through the system.
These ten townhouses, would they be added to this?
Are we good?
When this become two thirty?
Okay.
And this one forty?
May I think we work towards the agreements and get it done?
These are parcel two.
I mean, we can get the loop, we can do the things, development can move forward.
This is on, if you count all these, it's a hundred.
Okay.
No, I mean, I think, I think we're at a point where we're over complicating the process.
I do, I agree.
Three months ago, I, I probably would have differed, but I think we've given clear direction what our top wastewater project priority is at the moment, and we're, I don't know, I just feel like we're creating a long-term complication for an unnecessary reason now.
I agree.
I disagree. I believe it's not creating any kind of a long-term complication. I believe that it's moving the development forward that'd be the benefit to every citizen in Hagerstown. How do you feel, Councilmember McIntyre?
I agree with that, I think that, you know, I haven't heard a hard no yet, like a...
I mean, yes, Nancy, you do, yeah, yeah.
Nancy kept saying yes, she said, no, this isn't possible yet. So why can't we figure out how to get to a yes until we have a, an absolute no, we cannot? You're concerned about the loop?
Well, I am, but I'm also, I mean, part of the premise of this entire discussion that we left last time was the timeframe for the sewer pump station. We have directed that that be the priority, that it be completed, and that it will accomplish everything it needs to accomplish to serve this development, a development that is still on paper. And it's, it reminds me of our discussion we had for the, the large warehouse over near the...
Oak Ridge.
Yeah, over in Oak Ridge.
Yep.
Where we, we had a debate over, should we tax them twenty-three, should we tax them twenty-four? And I said, they're not going to be up and running before twenty-four, right? And they're still not done the site. So for me, like, I don't, they'll literally be, you know, grading this site when we're constructing on our site at this point. Three months ago, I didn't have that faith. And, and so, you know, I think that we have...
God, I wish I'd have brought some money.
I think that we have turned, you know, turned that, that corner on that particular item.
Well, also, can I, excuse, can I?
Yeah.
My point, this is done in phases because Phase One will go quicker than Phase Two, when I was talking about, you know, the entire development.
Well, Phase Two requires the pump station.
Right, so that'll be done, you know.
Right.
But as far as Phase One, that possibly can go quicker, I was talking about the, the entire development, but as, to your point, Phase Two will be going to the pump station, which will be done, you know, after twenty, the end of twenty twenty-four. So the holdup is starting and developing Phase One.
Okay.
So Jerry, you're the coin flipper.
What's the ask here? I'm trying to figure out, what's the ask, what's the ask right now for this body?
Well, I, I mean, you got two people who think we should move forward and find a yes, and you got two people who I believe that don't feel that way.
I don't, I didn't get that from now.
Yeah, that's not correct.
That's not, I'm not giving that from this side.
They're both yeses.
Yeah.
This property exists in the city of Hagerstown. What I'm saying the yes to is that it be served by the city of Hagerstown's utility system.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
You're saying it should be served by Funkstown's utility system. I'm saying that we have removed the complication of concern to that.
I don't think we've removed that complication, Kristin.
I mean...
Unless you have a, you know, a crystal ball sitting in front of you that shows that pump station building.
I don't have a crystal ball, this says that development's going to be approved by the planning commission in a timely fashion.
No, I don't either, but I know that it won't move forward until it moves forward.
It has to be done, it has to be done by December twenty-four, we have no option.
Funding wise, in order to use the funding, it has to be done.
So listen, if we want to benefit the town of Funkstown, we should approve sending those utilities and those long-term fees and things to the town of Funkstown to help with their budget. I don't agree with that.
Oh, I, oh, I get that. I do.
But we can't have it all and they can't have it all. I mean, it just doesn't work out that way.
Kristin is willing to give the sewer.
The obligation to build the pump station, I feel like we have, I feel like we have moved past that hurdle. For me, that was the big hurdle, that was the, like, the entire, like, premise of this discussion over the last four months was, are we ever going to get to building that pump station? We can't find these people because they're off in Egypt and we can't get some agreement signed, right? We have moved past that hurdle. So for me, if that hurdle is removed and you're, you're constructing in this vicinity, the water, the, the main water line, which you've agreed, you say you'll send it down here, no different than sending the sewer line in that direction. We're literally going to be constructing the thing that there was great concern wasn't going to happen, at the same time, they're going to be grading and proceeding with development of their site.
You just have to start construction by twenty twenty-four, correct?
We have to finish it.
And you're saying, you're saying you're going to be starting in like July of twenty twenty-four, right?
Well, that was, that was on the whole, the whole, the whole thing.
So we're going out and bid in October of this year for construction of this, and we've given staff clear direction, this has to be built. You know what I mean? I feel like that's the hangup that we were all sitting here debating about how to do something in the alternative, like, that's been removed. So for me, like, the alternative isn't the same value now that it was three months ago.
But this development, just like Gaver, it won't all be developed at once, and then the houses will be built. It'll be developed in phases, so six months probably before that pump station is ready, they could be starting with the first couple houses, you know, up front there. Now they're waiting, you know, six months or whatever. So there still is a time delay. Yes, has it gotten closer than it was four months ago? Absolutely, but it's still not exactly lining up.
Yeah, I mean, that could be if we had that crystal ball and said, you know, this development's going to go in X fashion any differently than the pump station's going to go.
And so that affects, I mean, I'd be hopeful that maybe it could be constructed sooner than December twenty-four, that's the deadline, that's when it has to be done. But it could be done sooner than that, too, right?
It could be, the, there's lots of lead times on stuff, and so I, I'm not, you know, I'm trying to be very conservative, saying, okay, if we continue to hit our deadlines, we'll be okay, and it'll be, you know, we'll be able to accept waste flow into that pump station as, as planned. There's no way I'm comfortable saying I'm, I'm going to, I can accelerate the schedule because I can't predict the lead time. You know, we know what the lead times are on our pumps and motors, and, you know, our generator has the longest lead time, that does not start us, stop us from starting up the pump station. But the other materials, the lead time is, is less, and we're hearing, depending on what it is, somewhere between twelve and twenty weeks is, is what the discussion was today on the different items. One thing, though, I will remind the mayor and council is that the reason staff recommended parcel one sewer go to Funkstown is not only associate, you know, not only to try to help meet the need of, need of the developer, but also to maintain that capacity, you know, the hundred and twenty EDUs, you know, in our, in our, at our wastewater plant. So I don't, I don't want to lose sight of that. Where this got really, became difficult is when water, you know, when, when water was introduced. Because if it was just wastewater, we would have already had clear direction. In fact, we've had clear direction on wastewater. Water's what kind of has things all muddied up.
I appreciate that clarification. But if I'm not mistaken, we were sitting in these chairs two years ago, and we were talking about building pump station thirty-three, right, and moving that flow, and the way we were going to pay for the cost associated with pump station thirty-three and the associated flow that it was going to absorb was development of these lands.
Right, and origi...
Which is weird to me to hear that...
There's more units.
We want to keep the hundred and twenty out, but the more units we get in, the more it pays for the cost associated with it.
In the, in the original concept plan, there was two hundred and twenty, either two hundred or two hundred and twenty units total, both parcels. And with the new, we actually will receive, we will receive two forty, you know, for just parcel two. So the change in reven, there's really no change in benefit fee revenues because of the increase in the number of units.
So you're still getting the tax base of the whole development, hundred and forty units versus the hundred and twenty that was originally proposed, and the one twenty is going to Funkstown, not into your, into your system?
I still haven't heard of a con to allow Funkstown to have both.
To have the sewer, yeah, I don't, I don't know that there has been.
I haven't heard of con to let them have the water, Kristin.
No, I, I disagree with that.
We're getting the tax base.
We're getting the loop.
And the loop.
So the con is what?
And I have yet to hear staff say that their recommendation is the...
Staff is not going to say that to you.
These additional meters and the additional master meters to provide that service. We're doing it because Funkstown won't take the sewer without the water, that's why we're doing it. It's not a better plan for us, we're simply doing it because it's better monetarily for them.
Better monetarily?
It's not better monetarily for us. It is not. In the long term, it definitely isn't, or, or Funkstown wouldn't want it. There's obviously some value to it, or they wouldn't want it.
Value to it, they're trying to cover the cost of service.
Okay, so then it's not better monetarily for us over the long term to not take it. I mean, that would be like the Tony McEdison saying, please, yes, come in, Columbia, please take this service area, it's not better monetarily for us to have that additional customer base. It just doesn't work that way. All right.
So I'll reach out to Funkstown and try to move forward with this, the sewer only at this point?
And if they don't, and if they say, no, this is water and wastewater, then done deal. It's, you know, I mean, if that's, if that's what, if that's what we're saying here.
Is that what we're saying?
You're wanting that the city will have the water or...
Is that what three people are saying?
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
I'm trying to get three people to make, to nod their heads here. So we know, because I, I think, I think both, both sides are, we beat this like a dead horse over and over and over again, and we need to come to a resolution to it.
Yeah, we do, you're right.
Okay.
So, yes?
Yes.
So, to...
If the sewer option is not put along on the table, done deal. You want to say whatever.
Okay. So what is red here?
Yeah, it's red against blue.
Yeah.
It's three that says...
That's not blue.
Funkstown can service sewer for Phase One, but the city will provide water for Phases One and Two.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, then that's all the...
No.
No, that's...
That's three that agree with that and two who disagree.
Oh, two that disagree.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll reach out to Mayor Crampton and set up a meeting.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you.
Glad to take you.
Oh, man. Next up, we have the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Quarterly Update Nonprofit Funding Request Program. We have Ms. Michelle Heppert, our chief financial officer.
Hello. Okay. I'm sorry, this is a heavy topic, too. We will start with the actual allocations and the update, and then if we need to, I can bring back the nonprofit application and...
Let's not do that, let's try to get that handled this evening. We've talked about that since April. It's now July.
I'm going to attempt it, yes. We can get three votes. As he leaves the table, okay. So, as, as far as an overall update, American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-one, we abbreviated, the acronym is ARPA. We got twenty point four million, we're at thirty point four percent in actual spend. That does not include anything that we also have encumbered and that we have approved and got on purchase orders, okay? So we will go right to the charts. First chart is completed, totally completed projects. So of all the monies that we allocated, started, completed, we have spent three point five. And I'm not going to necessarily cover all of those blocks just because they're completed, and we've talked about some of them in the past. So we'll flip to the second page. And we'll talk about projects allocated and started. All right, so we got another, on this page, approximately fourteen million. Now, again, not all of these do we actually have a purchase order in spend, but we had conversations and we obligated it. So first, this is the thirty-two North Potomac, it's in progress, we've spent one point two million dollars, and it's on track, that actual renovation, we're still hoping it'll be finished by fall. And everybody we meet over by December, we had a little bit of setbacks with the elevator, under the negative economic impact category. And again, the ARPA chart here, the categories are the categories as defined by the IRS. So we gave a hundred and twenty-five thousand to the C B B, to date, they have spent eighty-one thousand, and then we recently just got another invoice from them, so they are well underway. Probably by another month, they'll have all that spent. Support of local artists and bands, we had twenty-five thousand, this is going to be several different grant programs, so one of the ones that was already completely finished was the Heart of Art, and more to come on the rest, but we're still on track, have everything done by December twenty twenty-four. Citywide Restaurant Ready Grant Program, two hundred and fifty thousand has been allocated. I think the last that I heard was there was about five potential applicants, so hopefully we'll have something soon to be ready to review and get this moving forward. If, if nobody has anything done by October, I've said to Joe, we're probably going to have to look at this program and either recommend we do something different with it. But right now, there is interest, they do have applications, stuff are working through, so we don't want to touch it for now, okay? Next column, Negative Economic Impact in the Public Sector, our Outreach Coordinator position, we've spent seventy-seven thousand through June thirty. Office three sixty-five implementation, we originally had a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Anywhere where I'm allocating additional dollars to, you're going to see this reallocated in blue for a new number. We ended up needing an additional seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for some additional licensing, so I'll move that from some of those other big buckets. And we've, we, about halfway through, and our I T department is working diligently, and we're probably going to look at getting some other additional help to make sure that this is done, but we're in progress and we've been working with the vendor. Trash truck is on order, a hundred and twenty-one thousand. At this point, another at least twelve months out, probably... At this point, another at least 12 months out, probably looking, just because those things are 12 to 18 to 24 months long, for whatever the reason. Public Facility Emergency Equipment, so thank you very much. This was one of the things we came back and did, AEDs and stopped the bleeds. So we have, we got the approval for that and we've got purchase orders. So hopefully, we'll get them soon. City Hall Elevator Replacement, 591,000 is what we allocated there. We did award that to Callis, who is subcontracting with Oracle. And we're trying to get an update because parts and stuff are still hard to come back. The next category is the Infrastructure, where we limited ourselves of the full 20 million to only do up to 30% on city infrastructure projects. And again, that isn't a requirement of the IRS, but that was the maximum that this body decided that we wanted to put in this specific category. So Pump Station 13, 2.4 million, conversations with Nancy. Do not think that this is going to move forward and be done by December 2024. However, we would like to use that money and set some of that towards anything additional needed for Pump Station 33. And there are some wastewater I and I work and infrastructure that needs to be done that's like separate from this, that we would like to be able, have the ability to do. The I and I work portion, she could get a scope of work together and we could actually go back to her vendor because we just did that recently under ARC. So if we could piggyback onto what we just approved last month, we could start moving forward with some of that I and I work. The Stormwater Project, again, the 700,000 is the 700,000 that's over at the Field House. More to come next week on it, but hopefully, we're moving really and truly. It's not anybody, the only holdup there has been our funding. I will just leave it at that.
We're moving.
My three emails a week that I sent. Under Revenue Replacement, the Ladder Truck, 1.2 million. We've spent 732,000. Last estimated date, delivery date, was hopefully sometime by the end of August. The Gas Generator, 120,000, we actually have it. The contractor ran into some snags and snafus with hooking everything up. But hopefully, we're on our way getting permits. And that should be resolved shortly. And again, that should all be done in the next two months. Body worn Cameras, we approved a grand total of 523,000. To date, we've spent 217,000. And just as a reminder, that is actually done in annual increments. So everything's on track for that. It's just a matter of when we get the next two invoices. Collection Totes, Trash Totes, a million dollars has been set aside, 38,000 to roll out in downtown. I know Jim Bender is probably coming in the next few weeks to discuss the new contract and awarding of the vendor. And as we do that, and that moves forward, we'll be also doing totes throughout the rest of the city.
So are we going to reach that? That's a big number. Are we going to reach that with that particular project?
The million dollars and the totes? They're very expensive. And, and we've just been waiting to order them because we want to make sure who gets awarded the contract and that it's going to work with whatever vehicle before we spend it and invest it and roll out the trash containers to all the residents and the customers. Professional Court Extension is actually moving. They're going to have that done by the end of this year. So the portion of our project that is ARPA funded is 1.15 million. We do have other local city dollars in this project. And I'm, I'm assuming, even in conversations with Jim, we're thinking that we'll probably see the first invoice any day the county is ever seeing that type of project. So what should happen is the county gets everything, they pay the vendor and then they give us the invoice and then we pay them for our portion. Under the Premium Pay and Administrative is our Grant Coordinator. To date, we've spent 159,000. And that's not just necessarily for that position. It does include benefits, but it includes like a computer and some software and some different things. All right. Now for the last, 2.7 million. All right, so paid. And again, I did this for illustrative purposes and as we need to move things around, we can. So first, we had under Public Health, we had Behavioral and Mental Health for 500,000. I heard that we are not really moving forward and that we were interested in doing some type of nonprofit program. So I'm recommending we take that completely to zero. Next, we had 25,000 in the Youth Violence Prevention. Again, recommending that we take that to zero. Moving to the next column. For right now, until we get it off the ground and we actually receive applications and do this process and putting a new block for the nonprofits, and you'll see money coming in, 690,000, $5. It's an odd amount. Feel free to make that be an even amount. I'm just, what I did was I shifted everything, right? Because I said, this is what I would do. I shifted everything out that didn't, already have an allocation and it's plopped right there, right?
But, but where'd you get $5 from?
Well, because we have 20,410 dollars. And so, all the monies that's left from these completed that didn't spend extra pennies, yep. So they add up to $5. Blight Eradication and Operation Take Back, we have 500,000. I know in June that HPD and Chief Kiefer came and talked about, I think it's King Street, an expansion of stuff there and looking to spend about 185,000. So that should be on the concept for later in July for those to be approved. So that's coming out of this bucket. And then Negative Economic Impact, this is the one that we had on here from the beginning where we were thinking education and travel and daycare associated with that. So I'm taking that 425 out as well and it went up here. Last but not least, Brothers United Who Care, removing that 25,000. We have been working diligently with them. Brothers United Who Care does not have a SAM.gov registration, but there is another entity that they work with that does have that. Since, since, since that time, though, you know, this body has been clear. We need a consistent process, right? So what I've done, unless directed otherwise, is I've dumped it all into this nonprofit. So Brothers United Who Care, Beacon House, and Brooks House will be invited to submit an application through this nonprofit, the 690,000. That's not the direction that I
Also the United Way, right?
I'm sorry?
Well, United Way came in and made a precedent. You mentioned three, I didn't include them.
She meant to say United.
I just wanted to make sure we're not excluding any.
No.
Oh, no, 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 no. So, so United Way came in like a year ago. I was talking about the three most
Yeah, I was about to say, it was Funkstown that had come in. But the difference with the Brothers Who Care, with Brother Andy, I felt like there was already a, there was a yes that came from
Yes. And we had about 25,000 and we've been, like I said, we've been working diligently and we've been trying. But because they don't have the SAM registration, we can't give them the money. So if they wish to switch it and it needs to go through another organization that's going to help them do that, then I couldn't just switch out the organization because nobody at this level in administration has given us the authority to do that. I can absolutely, takes three of you to tell me to put it back in this bucket and you don't care who the organization is, as long as it is working with Brother Andy. But again, they can apply through the nonprofit portion. It's definitely eligible. It's just whoever the money ends up with, they have to have the SAM.
And we have to have a clear trail of where
It has to be the same. Whoever we're giving the money to, whomever is the application, whoever has the, had this stuff on file.
Is Brothers United Who Care a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure they're
100% positive on that?
A non
They're a nonprofit.
I thought they were a nonprofit. That was one of the things
And that is youth prevention.
But the issue is they don't have a SAM.gov account.
Right. I mean, they couldn't get one if they're not a 501(c)(3). But they have to be
For the nonprofit?
Right. And for SAM.gov.
Well, no. You don't have to be nonprofit for SAM.gov. So like, for instance, the monies that we spend on the elevator and the money, Axon is a perfect example for the police department. Any monies that we pass that is not to an individual has to have that registration. So even Axon has to.
Yeah, McIntyre has that anyway.
Yes.
My, my question also is, who is the other entity that
It's the public access thing that he was, another organization, I think. I believe that he had like a public access that was registered with the SAM, but not Brothers Who Dare to Care. So that's what I think. I believe that there's a nonprofit and then there's the public access.
And is the other organization willing to get to SAM.gov?
They have. What we've been told is
It's the same person. It's Brother Andy.
It's still, yeah.
Two different things. He has the, he has the publication, which is the writing part of it, working with the kids. And then he has the actual, the, where public access, like television, I think, something like that.
And, and he'll need it anyway because they're receiving money through the discretionary funding from Trump.
From Trump?
Well, and for me, we've already, as a body, we've already decided, yes, on that Brothers Who Care
So put it back.
Versus the other organizations. I also have a question about the Youth Violence Program. NV is not a 501(c)(3). It is, yeah, so, and we had talked about the allocation of those funds. We did. We will not be applying through
Cannot.
Cannot.
So, I have been attempting multiple times to reach out. And as of Friday morning, after we did all this, in talking with Chief Kiefer, the partners in the group are not far enough along to give him a dollar. So, so, so what I what I've proposed is this. We have a project on here under Revenue Replacement that says Fuel Station Dispensing Units for $35,000. They can take that or you can carve this back out and we can say it's going for NV Initiatives Performed by City of Hagerstown. But I promised, I looked at Councilmember Ofscher, who was insistent the last time, just like I have been insistent with these directors. Michelle, 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 you're only at 30% spent. I've already spent mine. Move it. Right, and I said, when I come back in July, whomever hasn't given me a hardcore number and isn't ready to go, I'm going to, this is what I'm doing. So this is your opportunity for the three of you to tell me.
We can leave it there.
Yeah.
Leave it there.
Did Chief indicate that
No, go ahead.
Did Chief indicate that by the deadline, that they would have numbers for us? I mean, we've got another year, right?
Right. I mean, he said if he had to give a number, he would say 20,000. I said, what's it, you know?
For youth prevention?
I don't
For prevention?
Yeah, no. I mean, if we move it He can get, he'll give us any number we want.
Yeah.
But if he doesn't have
But you gotta have the
He doesn't have the backup on exactly what that's going to be spent on, what, what we're at the city going to be spending on.
Right. We, we need to have something.
I mean, if we move it, we lose it.
Tangible.
Move it.
Yeah, we need to have something tangible.
If we move it, we lose it.
Not necessarily.
Well, kind of. If we put all, if we put 690,000 into a nonprofit and we can't get it.
If you leave it there, if you say, put it back as a placeholder under Revenue Replacement or if we put it here under NV, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to have to have stuff by October.
Yeah, we're, yeah, that was made very clear.
I, I'm fair, I'm
We absolutely cannot afford to not have a youth prevention. And, I mean, with the, the current state of specific communities, we just cannot afford to take anything else away. We have to figure this out. We have to figure out how to put money towards the youth. We have to.
I would like to keep it there, obviously.
So can I move it under How about I just relabel it as NV Initiatives? And the City Initiatives, so that it's clear that it's ours. And how much do you want me to leave there?
And Councilmember Ofscher asked for, maybe not. I thought that we had like a big chunk for 500,000 for one thing and just 25 for youth prevention. And I thought there was a conversation about putting more or allocating more, but we didn't
But you gotta know what that, what your own kid
She's like, this is why I'm here.
Okay, since the middle of May, I have been diligently following up. And when I tell you diligently, my boss can
She's been diligent.
And to the point that my boss is like, Michelle, sit down.
I think the conversation we had was if you're putting that amount there, but the, the chief's coming in saying that he's absorbing some amount in his budget, why would we not direct it to that?
Yeah.
Right.
He was covering the program director. He was covering the program director.
And what I was saying at that time is, why have his budget absorb it when
When we could
Oh, he could do this.
Through ARPA funds, correct.
But we're not
Okay, well, how much would, how much would the body like to see me pull out?
I mean, I think it's, we don't know if the partners haven't given any indication. We just don't know.
No idea. We don't know what the need is.
Do you need a number?
I bet we will know very soon.
Do you need a number?
If you tell us very soon.
I'm, I feel like somebody's, I feel like we're going to know very soon.
Okay.
We can, we can leave it blank, but then I'm going to rely on this group to tell me what you're wanting me to put in this nonprofit. Because if you're wanting, I heard from Councilmember Bruchy that we are going to get through this process tonight and we're going to get this application out of the way. So then part of that process is how much in dollars, right? Because I don't want to, we don't want to get it on the agenda for approval, right?
I see.
And put it out.
I mean, if we are covering a program director plus Is what?
It's only a portion of the program director, though, right?
The program director was what the chief said that he was going to absorb.
Simple number.
600?
Yeah. I mean, that seems like a simple number.
600.
As far as 600 to put towards the nonprofit funds, what Kristin's saying.
Take the 90.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like that's
I feel like we're going to be back at this table
Then take the 90.
Take the 90, put it to
The 95 towards NV?
Set it aside and if we can get something, some request
And then the 95?
We're going to be back at this table again anyway.
So Kristin, the 90, the 90,000 that's left over and the 5 towards NV?
Well, so 25,000 that is coming back out for Brothers Who Dare to Care, or whatever the group is. And then whatever we'll put into NV. And then the other, what I will do
Okay.
Is I will put back under Revenue Replacement as a placeholder, like I had before, right?
90,000, $5.
Yes, that was my call.
32 cents.
Definitely the 5. Michelle, do you want to come back like October for that 90 to say like, now what?
Oh, I will be back.
She said, I'll be back.
I've been trying to come
No, October, absolutely, because October, it's
Been trying to do it every quarter so that we're doing it publicly, we're letting people know that this is how we allocated, this was our plan and this is how they're spending it. And then, then we update and put the information in the charts back out on the website so that they're there.
Right.
We're trying to be as
Proactive, I appreciate it.
So once we get from those categories, the Phone System Upgrade, 75,000, we can't move forward with that until the Office 365 project is done. So hopefully, we'll be working on it. RFP is one of the things that we talked with our Information Technology Manager about. The Arctic Wolf Software, we can do that at the same time that we're running Office 365 Implementation. It's just that we might have to stop long enough to do an RFP. So IT's been a little, has had several projects. So we're, we will get there. We already utilize part of Arctic Wolf's cyber security software at HPD. This is rolling it out to the rest of the city. Firing Range, Security Gate. I honestly think this is going to be reduced because we've stumbled onto some
Logistical issues.
Yes, with the vendors who have participated. Public Safety Radios and in-station alerting. This would be the portion that we would have to pay after the county's grants went towards our staff at the fire station. And then if you flip to the next page, and I'm so sorry because this is flipping in and back, Community Risk Reduction Boards, this is something we'll have to start looking at doing an RFP on and moving forward. doing an RFP on and moving forward. That was in our fiscal year twenty-four budget. Then, back over under revenue replacement, traffic, traffic signal upgrades, allocated a million there. So if you're wondering why we took out five hundred thousand, we took out four twenty-five, how you didn't end up with nine hundred twenty-five thousand in nonprofits is because Rock and Mending has put some there and said, traffic signal grades, and then fuel station dispensing units. So if everybody's good, I'll do that. I'll make the nonprofit bucket, the six hundred thousand. We will put Brothers United Who Care back, and we will make sure that NV City Initiatives gets put back. Anything left, we'll go into a revenue replacement place for it. You'll see me back in another, in October, right? So then.
Well, probably depending on this next piece, or maybe sooner than that, as we begin to work through the application process.
Okay, we'll see. All right, so the next portion of it is, now since we know it's six hundred thousand for nonprofits, in my memo, I had the six hundred ninety thousand back, so I'll make that, we'll make that be six hundred thousand. Um, we're gonna flip the page, the application. So, we mimicked as close as possible, Frederick County, we'll be honest. We put separate categories in here. We didn't wanna necessarily list the categories and roll this out to nonprofits. Is this IRS categories for ARPA, cause not all of those are specific. But what we tried to do was we have at least seven categories, and we tried to keep them what I thought I heard council taught us were the priorities as we initially had them allocated, right? So just as a big overview on the first page, twenty-point-four million. For, um, an organization to apply, the nonprofit must be either a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(19). The 501(c)(19)'s are typically, again, very similar, but it's auxiliary units that specifically have to do with veterans posts. 501(c)(3) can do some stuff with veterans, but not always. The eligible categories, we have a pretty little circle at the bottom of the page where you can flip and we do it as a different chart. Uh, children and families, seniors, economic recovery, health and health disparities, transportation, mental health, and education. So we felt that these categories encompass everything we had underneath that behavior and mental health, as well as that other bucket that we had for the education and the transportation. Also, kind of a little bit broader to include some of the stuff that we heard from Beacon House and things that they were looking at doing. So as long as we're good with the categories, that's what we would leave. So again, it must be a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) or (19), and what they would be seeking funds for will be somehow related to one of these items. Next page. We go into a little bit of information on project eligibility. And one of the things that's gonna have to really shine through in these applications is demonstrating how the funding will be used, right? And how it may assist disproportionately impacted communities which face the most severe negative impacts. We're recommending, so the language in here, so this one was a little bit harder in that we didn't know how to do the grant, so we're saying up to fifty thousand dollars, because some may apply for five, cause it may just be a little. But if we're having Brooks House and Beacon House and, and the education and United Way to come back through, we know some of theirs is higher. So, we felt like fifty, up to fifty thousand was a good number to start with. It's a pretty divisible there into your six hundred thousand. If, if somebody, uh, so Councilmember Alshire's example was United Way. So if we had somebody like the United Way come back in and do the application and apply for multiple categories, it's fifty, up to fifty thousand per category, not per applicant.
Okay. Per category.
Per category.
Out of a pool of six hundred thousand.
Out of a pool of six hundred thousand.
And up to fifty thousand per category.
Per category, but one organization can request multiple categories.
Like if they do children and families, but they also do mental health, right? And then they can apply for fifty for that one and fifty for children and families. They could do fifty for education, fifty for economic recovery, and apply for that per category. Got it.
The actual application process itself, so at the very bottom, if, if we're good with this, we would approve it at the end of July. We could start pushing it out, give everybody to September first, so that they have the end of July, a little bit, all of August. Get everything back by September first. Um, then hopefully, we could have a determination by October so that we could bring back a matrix to this body to decide yes or no. So we've flipped the page. So that review process would be a subcommittee, um, of our Grant Steering Committee typically. Mostly it's gonna just be finance, somebody from purchasing, and hopefully, um, Joe's graciously agreed, um, for community and economic development staff to help review some of these applicants, right? Uh, the agreements themselves, we just wanna make sure that they all know, all of these require a sub-recipient agreement, and it's very vital, they have to have a current unique entity identifier, or UEI, and an active SAM.gov registration. And that has to be active throughout the entire agreement. None of these are things that this, that we are picking, these are requirements from the federal government. The dispersments will, will be on a reimbursement basis. It means they will have to pay, they will send us the receipts, the payment, and then we will reimburse them. Then we got the actual application process itself. Name, organization, some overview, description. Let's flip to page six. For the most part, it's just going into detail about their project and how they tie this back, right, how this is gonna address economic disparities. Making, checking to see if it's within qualified census tract. Flip the next page. Cause two of the ones I wanna make sure I point out, on page seven at the top, the second one down, population that will be served. Does your organization provide a majority greater than fifty-one percent to city residents? That is a big item. Um, and when we checked everywhere else that ran stuff for nonprofits or gave money anywhere else, making sure that the majority of everything being served was within your community and your residents.
That's good. Michelle, I have a quick question.
Sure.
We have been talking about Holly Place recently, and the CDBG funding that was cut, the seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars that they did not get this year. Councilmember Chandler, the mayor and I toured Holly Place yesterday, and, you know, to get a, a real feel for what their needs are. And it is, uh, it's not necessarily a project that they're doing, they're literally trying to make sure that they stay afloat.
And can feed.
And can feed up people. So, some of these questions are specific to projects. I mean, they're looking to get like a patio done in the backyard that they've been on the list with the Day of Caring, or what it's like, what it's called, Day of Caring, for two years, that they haven't been able to do yet. Um, so, I'm concerned with the wording of project through this, because I know that they'll want to apply for this funding, but it's not necessarily a project that they're doing.
And I, and I think it's project or program. I think there were project, we tried to be consistent the whole way through.
Okay.
Um, and I, and I'll be honest, the reason that most all communities left it is because that's literally how we, we have to assign them as projects, that's the IRS language. Um, so we were trying to keep it as.
But it's not a program.
Kinda consistent as possible.
Holly Place isn't a program, it's really the.
No.
Right. So the first question is, is this a new project or an enhancement, expansion of an existing program? So when you look at like Goodwill, they have programs that they do. You know, Holly Place doesn't have like a senior program that they're trying to apply for. I just wanna make sure that the wording covers what they would be applying.
What they would be looking to do would be to apply for funding so that they could continue to feed the senior population.
I mean, how does, you know, how do they get federal funds through CDBG? If it wasn't a program or something? I mean, it's gotta be.
As long as, as long as, you know.
And it's, and it's, and it's pretext, so we're, we encourage as much as possible, right?
Okay. That's a big concern for me to make sure.
And they're, and they're a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(19).
Yeah.
Are, are we gonna try too, and just out of curiosity, we have the, this chart, you know, with the different eligible categories, are we gonna try and disperse that as evenly as we can so we don't have all in one category? So we don't have all the transportation, or we don't have all, you know, um, you know, all the money going towards one slice? Are we gonna try and?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
And I think it's gonna do. So, so hold that, so hold that thought, and then we'll come back to that. Because I wanted to make sure, with the application itself, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of this fifty-one percent of the population being Hagerstown residents. And then the third one from the bottom, we're saying about, you know, other funding sources available. It literally says ARPA. But we are, like, as part of our other overall policy that we did, you know, one of the things that we have to do is do this risk analysis, and when they give us the feedback, we're gonna be looking if they've ever administered federal grants and awards, and then we're also gonna be looking to see if they have other funding, not just ARPA, but, and we do say other state and federal so that it wouldn't duplicate, but those are two of the big things. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip the next page. It's an acknowledgement and a certification that they have to sign, and it's just making sure that they agree to check all the boxes, right? Their organization. But if you go to page ten, we got this evaluation matrix, and so each one will be graded on these different categories. And then, we've got a proposal that if, from zero to ten is how we would score them. So that each potential applicant could get a maximum of seventy points. So I think the way it's gonna be dispersed is gonna end up being how they.
Weighted.
Or points.
Yeah.
So what's the, the point scale that would come to mayor and council?
So what we would do, I, I envisioned it something similar to what they've done in the past with the CDBG, um, public services, where we do Excel spreadsheet, list for you, everybody who sent an application. So, of those that we received, the top would be what's eligible, the ones at the bottom would be not eligible. And then we would put information in there, how much they requested, how much we're recommending be awarded, and put for you what their scale was from zero to seventy. Honestly, if we had to bring back every single application and the five of you have to go through this process.
Oh, my gosh, no.
We're never gonna get through it by December.
I mean, it may require, it may require one meeting just being, just being this to go through.
Maybe, depending on how many we get and depending on how they score, but, but that's part of it. Do we want it all to go in one of the seven buckets?
Yes.
Um, and, and who knows, we're, it, it's either going to be, we're gonna get next to none, or we're gonna get so many that we're gonna be so overwhelmed that I don't know how we're gonna get the responses back to you, and get them evaluated in that short time.
The matrix is helpful, though.
Yeah.
It is.
You know, like, kinda, because the ARPA funding is, you know, as Kristen has pointed out since the minute we found out about it, you know, is very specific to COVID-19 and, you know, all of that, so.
And we reiterate that throughout this document. It's just, that is when the auditors are here, and that's when we prepare our act first.
It's become the consistent way primarily.
All right. And then if you flip at the very back, we also just gave you our guidelines. Now, that is internally, I mean, we can, we'll put them out. Scott recommended that we do a little video excerpts, just kinda to put out eligibility and guidelines for people. But again, it's just giving you the review, twenty-point-four million, giving you the seven categories, and then underneath eligibility, the bullet point items, again, for me, the nonprofits. The second bullet point item is important for me to touch upon. Any organization that results in a conflict of interest are ineligible and depends, you know, fraternal and civic organizations, homeowners associations, labor unions, private, political, or public foundations, volunteer fire departments. So, if there's any risk of being at conflict of interest, we'll definitely make them ineligible right off the bat. Good standing with the IRS and with State Department of Assessment and Taxation, as well as the City of Hagerstown, must be in compliance with federal, state, and local human rights laws. That's, that's where, in order for us to make sure and to validate that, that's where having a SAM registration is beneficial, cause they do that, it will tell us whether we're in good standing. Cause otherwise, I would have no idea. Again, at the very bottom, up to fifty thousand per eligible category. The next page just, is just a reiteration of the application process. And then on the administration, um, just underneath grant administration, just the third bullet, well, ARPA funds may not be used for costs that will be reimbursed by any other federal or state. You can't, you can't duplicate. If you have one bill for a thousand dollars that's being paid by the city's ARPA and by somebody else, you have any money for that, no duplication.
How do we plan on announcing, uh, this to the nonprofits?
So, may ask Brittany to help us push it out, kinda like where she pushes out all her grants. We're gonna get with Wes to try to blast it on social media, and then we'll have it on our City of Hagerstown website. We will reach out to the ones that have come in and done presentations to encourage them, right? To reapply.
Wes can do a council rap. That's right. No, I'm not doing that. Can we also make sure that, cause I know that there was some loss in the CDBG funding, can we please reach out to those that didn't receive as much as they? Because Holly Place probably doesn't follow social media, even though I'm in contact with them, but if we weren't in contact with them before, they may not have known.
Yeah, CDG, CDBG applicants in general that didn't get full funding, they requested would be the ones to.
I think there was three of them.
Yeah, to just make sure that they are aware. Again, Holly Place wouldn't follow social media or watch the council rap. No offense, Wes, they just wouldn't.
Just, they might. So if you're all good, what we'll do is we'll bring this back to have it approved, the application process at the end of July.
Thank you for putting this together, cause that, this is needed with all the presentations that we received and just not having a process. This is what it does.
Yes, thank you.
Having a nice, fair way to go this out.
Absolutely, and we'll let Kevin Summers know too.
Oh, he's probably, he, he knows, I'm sure by now. He's watching.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Frederick became very popular in MML with that, with their application process. Could see a lot of people using it.
Oh, yeah, could I get a copy? Request for extension to City Water and Wastewater Approval, TC Mid-Atlantic Development, LLC. We have Doug Reiser, Economic Development Manager, and Nancy's back, Director of Utilities.
Thank you. Here tonight to review the request for extension to an approval for an exception to the city's water and wastewater policy is a vital development project for TC Mid-Atlantic. The approval was previously granted on March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and is set to expire September eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The developer still desires to develop the property, but market conditions had softened from the original request and approval. As such, the developer's now seeking an additional eighteen months, and the extension would expire January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, if approved. Information about the project is as follows. Developers TC Mid-Atlantic Development Five, LLC, or Trammell Crowe. Business type is a speculative industrial warehouse. There, there's a concept in your packet that shows a one million square foot building. Location is Route sixty-three of Greed Castle Pike, just north of intersection of Route forty, and approximately ninety-nine acres. There is an S-STAT map in your packet with a star on the location. The investment is expected to be a hundred million dollars with creation of five hundred jobs. The estimated water usage is twenty-four hundred gallons a day or twelve EDUs. Uh, the proposed timeline is a site planned to the county no later than July twenty-three, so this month, with final approval no later than February twenty-four. Uh, the location of the site, so the location of the site is within the agreed-upon boundary adjustment of the medium-range growth area, or MRGA, which was reviewed by the city and county in June of two thousand twenty. A map of location is with the amended MRGA and is highlighted by the G in your map. A map of location is with the amended MRGA and is highlighted by the G in your map in the packets. Additionally, in your packet is your request for an extension letter, the March 8th, 2022 motion packet, and a draft, a draft motion for the extension.
No, I don't have anything to add. I don't have any, I'm fine with recommending Mayor and Council approval of this request.
One.
Two.
Two. Three. All right. Thank you.
Last but surely not least, we have downtown event grant process. Brittany Arizona, Community Engagement Officer.
Hello, everyone. Okay, I said I'd be back for this, so I'm back now. At MML, I had the opportunity to talk to several Main Street operators, managers, about how they do an event sponsorship or event grant process. Several of them don't do it, but there are a few that do, the City of Frederick, and also the City of Salisbury. So I kinda reviewed what they did, and the memo that was in the packet is just kind of a high-level overview of what is behind it. So the changes from what we currently have versus what is in the packet today is, first of all, changing the title from event sponsorship to downtown event grant. I think that sends a different message to people who may be applying sponsorship versus a grant. The goal in the city's strategic plan is to get more feats on the street, which is the intention of this pot of money. So I know we've had several requests come before us with, like, bus trips or dinners. So I think we just kinda need to draw that line of what is this pot of money being used for? Which is to bring people to our city downtown. And then if there needs to be a separate discussion about other things, then perhaps we set up a different fund for that. But this is just specifically for downtown events. Money will be given to organizations only, not individuals. I don't know if this has been a problem in the past, but we just wanted to make that clear moving forward, that this is businesses or organizations, no individuals. Cap on funding, and the funding ranges from 500 to $3,000. This helps us be able to support more events. And that, again, the goal is to have more organizations hosting their events downtown, bringing a more diverse group downtown. So this will help with that. Reimbursement only, and something I was talking to Michelle earlier, and must provide proof of payment as well. This will just kind of do our checks and balances. And then also doing a grading criteria. It's just kind of been, oh, somebody's applied, how do we rank them? There, there really has, hasn't been a process in place. So now that we are getting more applications, which is what we want, we need to have something in place so that it's fair and equitable across the board. So attached, if you flip to the next page, you'll see what the new process will look like. This is what everyone would receive. Applications must be submitted, I have 30 in there, but after speaking with Scott, we think maybe we should do 60 days to allow us as staff time to process that. The reimbursement basis only, and then we pretty much went over everything else. One thing is, the event must be held entirely in the designated Main Street District or City of Hagerstown Park's properties. So again, the goal for this line item is to get feet on the streets in the downtown Main Street District.
Can I ask you on that?
Yes.
I'm glad you brought that up because I know in previous conversations, you know, with us renovating and improving our city parks, we should, I mentioned how we should highlight having more events at those parks and making that open for everybody, like, including like the Wheaton Park, for example, that was one of the discussions points. So I'm glad that it's not just Main Street, but city parks as well.
I was getting ready to add to that because before, when we sat down in our strategic planning, the thing, a community engagement was about engaging people in their communities, and with the hopes that then they will feel welcome enough to start coming downtown. I feel like that was the community engagement. People said they wanted things to happen within their community. And so I think that pointing people into their community and into a park, the closest park that is Hagerstown, is a great, a great thing.
And I did wanna know one more thing with this packet, if we could include the map of Main Street?
Yes.
And also include the city park names?
Yes, we can do that.
Don't know. Don't know.
That's very true.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yep. And I would even be open to doing, because the A and E district encompasses a little bit more. So if this as a body feels like we wanna do the A and E district as well, I'm completely open to that. It's a few more blocks kind of on each.
It is A and E.
Yeah.
It brings people's arts and entertainment, it's community engagement.
So I can add that, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Just for your awareness, in fiscal year '23, we sponsored 24 events. In FY '24, so we had the application open, we encouraged people to apply by March 31st. We already have 24 requests. And that doesn't include nine events that have previously been held that haven't yet submitted, so.
Get on it, huh?
Yes.
It's a good thing, yeah.
But that's why there's a need for us to cap that, so that, and to have a grading criteria. So people may, people that have been fully funded before, they may not receive their full funding, but they still might get partial funding. And this will go through until the funds have expired, and then we'll just say, sorry, you know.
Yeah. Thanks, Brittany, I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Another help to pull, we.
Thank you very much.
City Administrator.
A couple, Brittany, you wanna, since you're up here, I've got the midweek music market, you wanna just pump that real quick?
Sure, starting this Wednesday. Every Wednesday, from this Wednesday through August 23rd, there will be free live music in University Plaza. There will also be an artisan market, Beer Garden hosted by Hub City Brewery. We're trying to get a food vendor, I don't know if there's one for this week, but hopefully in the following weeks, there'll be a food vendor. Our Heart of Art Grant recipients, which they're funded by ARPA. There will be eight to 12 vendors at each Wednesday evening. So hopefully the weather cooperates every Wednesday, come out, enjoy the time. And then Thursday mornings in July, from 10:30 to noon, we're gonna do Storytime in the plaza. So anyone that has young children, bring them down, it's free. We have a few community organizations joining us, so.
And while she's here, another part of comments, for MML, Brittany and Jen Young were like the highlight of the entire session. Nine, how many?
800.
800 Crumpies doughnuts were provided.
That's awesome.
And not, they were gone, well, we got rid of all of them, basically. And it generated probably the most buzz of the, of the center. And we gave a lot of stuff away, had a lot of people talking about the field house, talking about the multi-use center. It was very cool to see. And, and, and we were all getting stopped, saying, you know, you have any more doughnuts?
I mean, there's people saying they're coming for doughnuts.
I mean, I, I would tell her, Thermont used to, I used to be so jealous of Thermont because Thermont brought like a general store with them, and were given coffee cups and all that, we blew them out of the water, sorry. So it was just kudos to them and, and how they, how they ran that booth. It was great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
MML in general, I thought was great, a great session, great time. Also, we picked up our banner city, so we're in Banner City again, and that's thanks to all of you that are, that are participating. The one last thing is, I, I was notified that the Board of Directors has selected me as Chairman of the Legislative Committee for this year. So I'm gonna be doing a little bit of that for this, for this time. So it'll be, it'll be busy, but it'll be fun.
There's work to do.
It'll be fun. And then the last thing is, the summer, the last outdoor movie of the summer at City Park will be Thor: Love and Thunder, great movie, at dusk around 8:30. And pre-movie activities begin at 7, so.
What night is that?
Huh?
What night?
Uh, that is Friday, July 14th. Great movie, and that's been a great series, it has been very well-attended at City Park, and was glad that we could do that. And thanks to Parks and everybody, Public Works, Fire, Police, fireworks went off very well. As, as I think I related to you all through an email, the amount of fireworks is just overwhelming in the, in the community. And the drones were in the air, the drones were able to identify many of those shooting off illegal fireworks. But it is overwhelming, the number of illegal fireworks that are out there. It's crazy. So thanks for all the help from staff that participated. That's it for me.
Councilwoman. Councilwoman McIntyre.
I just want to announce that the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council application deadline has been extended to July 14th. So if you know of a young person that wants to make a difference and get involved, this is a great opportunity to learn more about city government. And they are doing a fantastic job of getting themselves immersed in the community and learning where they can help. So it has been extended, it's not many more days, but July 14th is the deadline, so.
What's the grades?
It's nine through 12.
Nine through 12?
Yep. And they'll actually, there's two spots that are for older than that, like, it's up to 20.
One of the youth was in the Miss Maryland Teen Pageant.
Wow.
And was, did a great job.
I mean, Kevin Boakum is what, at Harvard?
At Harvard, yeah.
Look at that.
That's pretty good.
That's good stuff.
So, yeah, it's a great program, and Anniston, who has graciously agreed to stay on part-time for a little bit, is still heading up the program, and is doing great, so, yeah. Yep, that's it.
And the member, Ruti.
I actually have three things this evening.
Next.
Got him off.
Uh, number one, you see this big picture, photograph over here, a pencil drawing of Hagerstown baseball team in Hagerstown, Indiana. Kids taking one to the All-Stars.
That is very nice.
They actually sent the drawing to Mike, and then Mike had it framed.
Wow.
And presented it to the city two weeks ago.
That's really cool.
While you guys were out gallivanting Ocean City.
We were working, thank you.
Not on Saturday night you work. But anyway, yeah, so it was great. The town manager was here, and some people from Hagerstown, Indiana, along with their families. Had a very nice reception at Bull's and Bears downstairs, so, yeah, it was great.
They're really nice people.
Where shall we hang at?
I, you know, I was thinking, a couple things. One, should be maybe in the hallway for now, and then maybe donate it.
To the baseball.
Yeah, to the new baseball stadium.
Yeah.
I think, I think they would like to have it, I don't know.
What about our indoor turf food?
Could be, I mean, you know, again, it's just, it's great, so. Second thing, a huge thank you to the, uh, the finality of, of the 911 Center debacle over the last three to four years. Today, the Board of County Commissioners voted to accept the MOU that was sent. They will be forgiving 1.2 million in funds that are owed to them to be used as their portion of a donation toward the sports plans. So, Michelle, you got that 1.2 million. And going forward, they're gonna, you know, they agreed to adhere to the step-down in payments until 2025, I think, or 2026.
We're gonna have that in work session next week, just to go through the MOU, too, so.
I guess I can't remember what the final date is. But great, I, I can't thank them enough, it's great to get that off everybody's plate. And hopefully we can, you know, move forward and, and, you know, work together on numerous other things that are coming down the bike. Last but not least, we mentioned using some ARPA funds for HPD in the King Street area. Scott, I had a conversation with you a while back about some added security code amendments, kinda like for people in areas that are troubled by quadri life crimes, that wanna secure their properties a little bit better. And you were gonna get with code and see about getting some sort of amendment put together that.
Yep. Since transient housing's been taken care of, that's current.
All right, cool. Okay, that's it for me, and welcome back, everybody.
Yeah.
I missed you.
Did you?
I sat here on Tuesday night, Obama.
Councilwoman Bernard.
I just wanna just shout out to downtown Hagerstown again for sharing the numerous events that's been happening. It's a, it's, it's great to see just every, every weekend, on the weekdays, or something to do. Just last week was the Carnival Caribbean Festival on Potomac, and that crowd was huge. And I spoke with a couple that was from Germantown, and they said they saw the flyer on some social media post, and that's why they came. And they said, you know what, we haven't been to Hagerstown since the Nike store was removed from the outlets. I'm glad to see this is happening, I'm also gonna stick around to, you know, visit Vibes. So shout out to Vibes and Tribe Code Press for putting on that event. I've never seen that many people that's not from the area in downtown, so.
That's incredible.
Just another highlight of, of everyone stepping outside of the box, just encouraging everyone to come outside and mingle. And I'm happy to see more events happening in the future.
Councilwoman.
Councilmember Ashar.
Uh, just one thing, I wanna say thanks to all of the folks that positively assisted the young man that, you know, had a serious situation at our pool. I was thankful that the folks that did assist in that situation, you know, were there, had the presence of mind, and had a very positive outcome from it. So I think that that, you know, that's the most important part of any discussion, you know, associated with that incident. And I hope he and his family are doing well. I worked at a pool when I was much younger, the halfway pool. And to the folks that did not participate in that incident in a positive manner, I just wanna remind you, especially the adults, these are kids working at these pools, these are kids that are lifeguards, these are not adults. You know, I just came back from a week at Ocean City myself, and, you know, the remark down there was, you know, there were a noticeable number of empty lifeguards chairs, they're just having difficulty, like anybody else, getting that qualified and trained staff to, you know, respond to what is, at least from my experience, I'm watching my coworkers at, at the pool when I worked, is, is at times a stressful job. Our pools are not, you know, they're not intended to be there for, for babysitting or daycare. I mean, that, you know, it's a serious place, and it requires serious responsibility from everybody that, that visits those venues, no differently, I think, than any other recreational venue of that nature. And so I just wanted to say, you know, to those folks, you know, I'm glad that cooler heads prevailed. And I wish citizens would understand, you know, Facebook isn't a news outlet. It is an opinion vacuum. That's just a reality, and it does no good service to the young folks that take on that responsibility, you know, to read the, the, you know, denigrating, if that's the right word, like, synopsis. like synopsis, you know, of events that were not, or that aren't captured on the social media, and everybody wants, you know, right, to respond first and be the first to, you know, to tell the story, you know, and that's exactly what it is, and so, I think that the moral is, you know, that those folks return to work, that the young man, you know, responded and is healthy, you know, and our pools, just like our parks and all these other things that we provide, they are not an obligation. You don't have a right to them, and we don't have a responsibility to provide them. We have the opportunity to provide them. You have the privilege to participate in them, and I think that that needs to remain aware to the customer base that, you know, that attends those recreational spaces.
I just want to go on the record to state that, I was a kid going to a football field. It was my duty to stress out those lifeguards as much as possible.
You're on the record.
Jeez, he was on the record.
I was loved by lifeguard there, I truly was. That was cute.
A little prophetic, something...
Yeah.
Exactly.
Councilmember Schindler.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a busy two weeks since we met, so it's hard to recognize all the events and everything that's going on. A guy would echo what Councilmember Burnett said. Downtown Hagerstown's done a great job bringing in different groups into the downtown. The turnouts have been increasingly, just, just very impressive to me, I like to see that. The 4th of July, you know, thank you to all the staff, HPD, HFD, for all the hard work putting on that for all the citizens of the town. I know they, the HFD, specifically the Fire Department, very stretched with also having a fire incident the same night, so, you know, hats off to them. I know they're struggling, you know, with staffing, and, you know, I hope they continue to ask for anything they need from us to make sure they can continue to do what they need to do. And I wanted to say a great job to Hagerstown Hopes on the event they had this weekend out at Dobbs Woods Park. It was a fantastic turnout for, you know, in our city park. It's a great job, so, that's all I have to say.
Nice. Well, I wanted to also say the MML Summer Conference, I think that for most of us that were there, we went to the housing, was it the housing, was it homelessness?
Mm-hmm.
Homelessness panel, which our city administrator was a panelist on, and I just want to share with everyone that everyone across Maryland was trying to figure out what the solution was for homelessness and mental health, and a room full of electeds and staff, and no one had any answers, but what we did realize is that Hagerstown is doing something. That Hagerstown is having conversations. Hagerstown has the Homeless Coalition. We've been working, I feel like our city administrator probably was one of the most profound speakers and maybe had the most information about what we're trying to do, so thank you for that, Scott. And also, congratulations for legislative, that's, that's amazing. I visited Surrey Hill Hotel just to kind of see where they were. They weren't unable to secure funding, and so, they had brought an investor to town, and actually, we had a great tour, and I look forward to maybe seeing what their next steps are. It was awesome. They, they brought a couple of partners with them, and so, I hope that the project makes it through. I told them that it's the, that we would like to see it. We don't want to make it more complicated for them. Us today, I'm not sure if Hub City Vineyards was part of it, but I know the lady from Hub City Vineyard, Lisa, and a bunch of community partners were out at City Park for the young lady that was found under Hager House, and they did a homeless, they did like resources for the homeless, but they did a celebration of her life, and they had music, and they had food, and the media was out there, and I'll just tell you that it was a beautiful thing to see. You had one inn, there was Girls Inc. that was eating at the, at one pavilion, but over here by the theater part, there was a whole community of people. They had clothes, they had food for them, and I mean, it was families out there. So, just thank you for community partners that constantly find a way to be able to serve that population at whatever cost. And then, I second the Caribbean Festival. I'd never seen so many people that were not from this area, like having a great time in this area, talking great things. There was a couple that stopped me and said, oh my goodness, like this is the best thing Hagerstown has done. And I was like, oh, thanks, could you go on record? But I just think that it was amazing to see two businesses downtown bring in a bunch of people that normally wouldn't come to our downtown. It was awesome. The Salute to Independence, I had the honor and the privilege of reading a letter from Abraham Lincoln out there, and it was a violinist that was playing, but what an honor to be a part of the Salute to Independence. As the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, I mean, I had to stop myself from crying. So, thank you, Maryland Symphony Orchestra, for constantly extending an invitation for me to go up there and be beside Elizabeth Schultz, like I'm totally a fan, totally, totally a fan. That's why I say yes. And then, also, Hagerstown Hopes, that, that Pride Festival out at Dobbs Woods was another great thing. Lots of resources, lots of community. We are much safer whenever we engage community and we bring community out, outside. I just want to reiterate too, that none of us have been through what we gone through in 2020. Nobody, we haven't been through a pandemic. Mental health is at an all-time low. Just be kind. Find a way to just be kind. The language that we're using, the way that we're, that we're handling this, none of us, we don't know how to, how to get out of this, right? But we can get out of it if we're kind to each other. We don't have to, I don't like everyone, but I find a way. I don't, but I find a way to still be kind, because that's what we're, that's what we're supposed to be doing as human beings. Like, be kind. You never know what someone's last straw is, and it just feel the intensity as we try, and we're the frustration of trying to come up with solutions and trying to bring things together for the homeless, for recovery, for reentry, that if we would just be kind. I feel like the people that are out there, our constituents, would feel a little bit better if we're being kind. And with that, we're adjourned. Why is everybody so quiet? Like I suck the air?
Hello and welcome to Council Rap. I'm Wes Decker, joined by Community Engagement Officer Brittany Arizmendi. It's been a while since I've done this. I hope I remember how to do it. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
You were tackling event sponsorship, or as it's now going to be known, grant sponsorship, is that correct?
Close. Downtown event grants.
Downtown event grants. I, I knew you would correct me on that. And, and, and talk a little bit about why this was necessary. You did that during the meeting in your presentation, but for the purposes of what we're doing here, talk about how all of this came about.
Sure. So, I've been with the city for about a year now, and we've seen a great increase in the amount of organizations and businesses wanting to host events in downtown, which is exactly what we want to see.
Right.
This will increase diversity, increase feet on the street, so all the things that align with the city's strategic plan is happening, which is excellent. Our goal as the city is to be able to help sponsor a lot of these events that happen. So, we've already seen for this next fiscal year, the same amount of events that we sponsored last year, we've already seen those amount of applications for this upcoming year. So, we just needed to figure out a way to still be able to help a lot of these events get their sponsorships, but also to be able to have some criteria that they fit in between so that we make sure that we are fulfilling and staying within our strategic plan.
Yeah, do you get any sense in having worked with some of these events to this point in time and having dealt with the, the need for the sponsorship monies? Do you have any sense of how important that is in order to make these events happen? I'm just trying to get at, you know, the, the city's contribution to these and, and what that means to these. I mean, I mean, is it, i- is it to the point where some of them just simply wouldn't happen if, if they didn't receive the funding from the city?
I, I think that's probably the case. I mean, we, the city is in Washington County, so if these events were feasible outside of the city, then I think people would be exploring doing so elsewhere. So, I think this, having a downtown event grant aids in the ability for people to help them come downtown to host these events, and it also offsets costs, you know, that are affiliated with having an event downtown versus having it in the county somewhere.
And you're dealing with a finite amount of money here.
Yes.
So, how do you divvy that up? How do you do it fairly and equitably? So, with this, this, this switch from mentioning sponsorship to grants, give us some sense of what you're hoping to achieve with that beyond trying to get as many events coming to the city, making sure that they receive money, and, and making sure that that's open to as many as possible? Because we've seen, as you, as you said, I mean, just over the last year, so many new events too. So, there are ones that have been there. We, we love the ones that, that come back, but at the same time, we want to be able to facilitate those new ones that are coming in too.
Exactly. I think it helps diversify the events that are being offered. And I think we saw that with the Caribbean Carnival. It's the first type of event we've had like that on the streets here, and as the mayor and Councilmember Burnett, as they were alluding to, I, I was down here for it, and there were very few people amongst, besides those two that I saw that were from Hagerstown, and when you asked people, they were from Montgomery County, PG County. So, it's creating events that bring people downtown. And again, as part of the Main Street and Arts and Entertainment, we want to bring people here to help the businesses that are already in existence, and really to create downtown Hagerstown as a destination for people to come, whether it's for a festival. They get a small taste of Hagerstown, and then they want to come back for a weekend to explore and visit because they just got a tiny piece of what we do have to offer here.
And, and how pleased were you to see that, really, when you talk about the Caribbean Festival, that was the brainchild of two downtown business owners?
Yes, and I think it's so important, and to amplify, they're black woman-owned business owners, just for them to take this, and for, really for me, just to play a supporting role, to be here to answer questions, to help, to help get them on their feet with, when it comes to event banners and where do you put tents and electricity, all the logistics behind it. But to see them really pull an event like this together in really not a lot of time, I think it's exciting to see, one, that it works, and two, with more time to plan in the future, how many more people can we get to an event such as this? And then also, to encourage others who saw an event like this possible, perhaps their wheels are turning in their head, hey, how can I do an event downtown that may bring their culture or an idea that they have, bring that to life down here in downtown?
Well, there's no doubt that success breeds success, and when other business owners or other individuals see something like that and the success that it was, it certainly encourages them, as you alluded to, I think, to even consider maybe something that they wouldn't have considered before, because now it seems very, very feasible. You talked in your presentation to mayor and council about the fact that these events that will fall under the auspices of the grants will be in the Main Street District and/or the city parks, of which there are 22 of them in the city, so there are a lot of choices there. So, there are a lot of choices there. But give us some insight into why that is and if you can maybe kind of give us an idea of what that Main Street District encompasses without the benefit of a visual aid.
It's several blocks. So, city center, so think South Potomac Street, North Potomac Street and Public Square.
Okay.
And then, a few blocks out from both north and north, south, east and west. So, in all directions essentially, is Main Street. And then, Arts and Entertainment is even a little more than that.
Expands it.
And then, of course, city parks. Our main goal is to bring things downtown. So, that's going to be our main focus. But we do have a few events that occur, and we work closely with Parks and Recreation for some events that they're hosting.
Right.
So, if there's, if there are some events that are happening there, we want to consider those as well because a lot of those people may be coming downtown if there's an event happening.
I want to hit on a couple of other things that you bring to the table literally here, but before we close out on the grants, what are the important things for people to know as it relates to those changes? Maybe some dates or things like that, that they should maybe have in the back of their head in terms of getting their applications in and all of that? And maybe just where they should go if they have any questions?
Sure. So, downtownhagerstown.org has all the information for fiscal year '24 event sponsorships. We did open this cycle of applications back, I believe, early March of this year with March 31st as a deadline. So, it's, we've already received a lot of applications. So, we will begin that review process, if not later this week, certainly early next week. And we'll begin sending out those award letters as soon as possible. I don't know as far as when for next year. We'll probably do it at the beginning of each year, calendar year.
Okay.
So, January, February, probably February is more realistic because January, everybody's getting back into the swing of the new year. So, probably February, March.
Okay.
Because our fiscal year starts in July. So, that's when we'll start the new cycle.
Right. And it's not necessarily first come, first served. You just have to get your application in by the deadline and then, I believe what you said, and correct me if I don't have the semantics right on this, that there'll be some sort of review to make it fair and equitable then in divvying up those funds to those who qualify?
Yes. So, the 24 applications that we received, we're going to go ahead and review those. If there are still funds left and available, then what we'll do is anyone else that's interested, they have, as long as their event is 60 days out, they are eligible to apply. Anyone, I mean, anyone could go ahead and apply if they wanted to, but we're going to take the organizations that we already have and review them. And then, if there's still funding left over, then we'll go from there.
All right. Fair enough. Another thing that you touched on and certainly the city administrator also mentioned it, the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City, which you were there, certainly promoting the city of Hagerstown in a bit of a different way, but really taking a piece of Hagerstown's heritage and something that Hagerstown is well-known for to Ocean City and was a rousing success.
Yes. We decided to do Crumpies Donuts as our giveaway instead of, a lot of times at these conferences and exhibit halls, you come home with a huge bag filled with random tchotchkes that I rarely use. I'm guilty, I have three bags of things in my office right now. So, it was just an idea of, okay, what can we do that so people will know Hagerstown and also encourage them to visit?
Yeah.
So, we gave out 800 donuts successfully. We did have some left after the first day, so people came back Tuesday morning for their breakfast donut. But Crumpies was gracious enough, I'm not sure how long it took them to do it, but they also individually sealed each donut so that they stayed fresh. And we did an experimental test, which you were part of.
I was part of that, I must admit.
Yes. Just to make sure they were fresh and they would be good for the car ride down and for the next day. So, I think it was a success. We got a lot of people to come to our booth that probably would not have stopped by otherwise. So, yeah, it was, it was a good time and it was an opportunity to meet with other leaders as well.
What did you, what did you learn overall, I mean, really painting with a broad brush from being there? I mean, what were some of the things that you heard, that maybe you heard more than once or, you know, what was one of your big takeaways?
A lot of people had no idea where Hagerstown was. Because these are people from all over the state of Maryland. So, it was nice to get to explain to them where we were.
Okay.
Because I think Western Maryland is often left out. Once you, once you get to Frederick, it's kind of like, "Oh, what's beyond there?" So, I, we got to explain to people where we were located. And then, also, I got to do a lunch with other Main Street managers with Secretary Day from Department of Housing and Community Development and several of their staff members. So, we had a really great lunch, just sharing about what's been working in Main Street, especially since COVID. What changes do we want to see? And Main Street Maryland is actually going to be celebrating 25 years. So, we are working as a group to figure out how to celebrate that within our own communities in Maryland. So, it's really just a great opportunity to connect with others.
Right.
Often, as a Main Street manager, you can feel like you're out on an island by yourself with a lot of the struggles and challenges that come within a Main Street District. But once you meet with other managers, you realize you're all in the same boat together. So, it's just refreshing to catch up with them, to know we're all in this together and really to see how we can work together. And I mean, even with the event grant, I met with Salisbury and I'm going to meet with the city of Frederick. So, just creating those relationships and seeing what other cities and municipalities are doing.
Yeah. And it's a very unique opportunity to be able to do that. So, taking advantage of that in the long run will certainly pay dividends. Speaking of the long run, let's truncate that to the short run. What are some of the upcoming events here? I know you touched on midweek during the session that we just had, but with that and some of the other things that are coming up, hit some of those highlights for us.
Midweek, we have every Wednesday, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., Artisan Market, Live Music, Beer Garden, hopefully food vendors. We're going to have a Kid Zone. Music starts at 6:30, again, free, open to the public. We are also featuring a free giveaway at each midweek music and market.
And that will, will that be a different one each time?
It will be a different one each time. The first 50 people to come through the gates will get the free giveaway. People can follow Downtown Hagerstown Facebook and Instagram to see what the giveaway is going to be each week.
And I encourage people to do that anyway because you're so active on there with stuff. I mean, if you blink, you miss something. I mean, they're, you know, sometimes there are multiple entries per day. So, you really have to pay attention. But man, there is so much happening and it's truly outlined there.
Yes. And then, so besides midweek, we have Storytime at the Plaza. So, that's every Thursday in July from 10:30 until noon.
Okay.
This week, we are featuring Authentic Community Theater. They're going to do their storytelling. And then, Washington County Free Library is also helping out. So, Mr. Jeff from the library will be there. And then, the following weeks, we have Bings and Pots, which they are a puppet duo.
Bings and pots?
Bings and pots.
Okay.
You have to come to check them out. But they have a whole slew of activities set and ready to go for Storytime. We have our last Imagine Hagerstown, which got rescheduled from June, so got rained out then. So, July 28th will be our final Imagine Hagerstown, featuring DuPont Brass as our headliner and then Kiara Ware as our opener. We have Farmer's Market going on next Thursday. And we have been in conversation with two fresh produce vendors. So, fingers crossed that at least one of them will say yes and we can have that for July's Farmer's Market. And then, roller skating, we have rescheduled. So, we were going to do that this Saturday. We've rescheduled that for August. So, August 26th will be roller skating.
Roller skating returns.
Yes, it will.
Last year it debuted and it's back this year.
Yes.
Very cool.
So, I think, I don't want to overwhelm the people.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine for now. Yeah, we told them where to go and to follow along. So, you know, I would just encourage everyone to keep an eye on that. Anything else that you want to, you want to leave the people with?
Come out, join us, show up. Everything is free.
Yeah. It's simple.
Yes.
It's simple. You just come out and the events are there for you. So, come take advantage, have a good time. I mean, I don't know that there has ever been so much going on and so many different opportunities. That's the thing I think that's really exciting. As you said, we've certainly been able to diversify from a cultural standpoint with some activities that we've had. But all of these, like you said, I mean, even ones that are coming up on a weekly basis, there's a little twist each and every time.
Yep. We have different genres of music each week. So, we invite you to come out and see, and the giveaways are also, we have some pretty good giveaways, I think. So, hopefully, everyone else thinks they're pretty good giveaways. So, yeah. And parking, I know parking can sometimes be a hindrance for some people to come downtown. There's parking on West Washington Street, which is street parking. And then, of course, we have the Arts and Entertainment District and we have the University District Parking Garage. So, street parking is free after 5:00 p.m., I believe.
I think you're right.
So, again, no reason to not come down and enjoy beautiful summer nights in downtown Hagerstown.
And that's the way we end this Council Wrap. Thank you so much, Brittany. Thanks to all of you for watching. And for now, that is a wrap. I'll see you next time on Council Wrap.